You're here? Councilmember Adam Burke, you're here?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Spears, are you here?
He is here.
Councilmember Wadham, you're here? Councilmember Andrews, you're here?
Here.
Councilmember Juneau, are you here?
Here.
Chair, so everybody's here in town for the discussion meeting on August 18th, 2025.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming, and I appreciate the audience also coming out for this special conversation. So there are a number of staff presentations that have been put together to just help present a holistic picture of some of the services that are already in place, an update on the unsheltered within the city. And then I know our city attorney also has some additional information to share on top of what was presented at council's last meeting. So we'll get started this morning with Rachel Schuler, our Director of Housing and Urban Services, who will provide an update on our unsheltered population. I did print out some slides, too. Great, so thank you, so you can move to the next slide. So just to start things off, I just wanted to share the housing ecosystem. We share this slide a lot out of Charlotte, but it really helps show that when we're moving through the housing ecosystem, a lot of what we're focused on here at the city with a lot of our funding and programs is that stable housing, where everyone wants to be, it's the goal, and so that's where a lot of our investments and resources are. But we do focus on the homelessness care through some of our funding for shelter and some transitional housing that we'll get to later, but just wanted to put that into perspective again. Next slide, please. So we're speaking about today is the unsheltered. Again, we talked about this at our joint meeting and at a couple meetings. What we're talking about, the unhoused, there's the unsheltered, and you can be sheltered. As you look across that spectrum of the different ways that people live, whether they're doubled up or in motels, in recovery housing, transitional, those are the sheltered folks that were part of that unhoused population. The unhoused is, what we're talking about, the unsheltered, is those who are living in places that are not intended for humans to sleep. And so that's where you're seeing the encampments, people on the streets, the variety of different things. Next slide, please. Exiting homelessness, there are generally three ways: self-resolution or rapid exit, that's more of just the, you know, maybe a bus ticket back home, it may be just some minor case management, reconnection, relocation. It could also just be a little bit of security deposit, moving into rapid rehousing where it's more of a three-month typically, up to 24, but whereas, again, helping people get to that housing, get them started, and then they're able to be self-sufficient after that. There's another population with permanent supportive housing that needs that long-term assistance, comprehensive case management for folks with long-term homelessness, complex physical and mental disabilities. Next slide, please. As many of you remember, we participated in the Unsheltered Strategy last summer, well, last spring through summer. This was just a process that we went through as a community to talk about different strategies to address the unsheltered homelessness, starting with the kickoff meetings that we had with the city and county elected officials, defining the problem with a number of our providers, speaking to those with lived experience as the voice of the consumer, developing a path forward to finding success, and then presenting this report. Next slide, please. We had a number of participants, about 27 agencies participated. Highlighted in red are a lot of the folks that are providing beds and housing. The other folks are providing some resources and services, but just to put that into context of who is at the table for that meeting. Next slide, please. And so what that group left with were two strategies, one, looking at low-barrier options, really triage, getting people off the streets into that next step. There are a number of outcomes and objectives and measures that were identified for this, as well as, next slide, please, for the longer-term solutions, looking at supplying capacity for that longer-term supportive housing. And so again, that is that long-term well-being that were identified. Next slide. Based off of that, there were some opportunities for success specifically identified. Since this meeting had taken place in September, some of these initiatives have not moved forward, but there has been some progress. Next slide, please. So I just want to highlight some of the work that's been done in the community. Continuum of Care was identified in this group as needing additional support. Through a grant from the endowment, they are going to be able to look at their coordinated entry program to be able to sustain it and continue the great work that's being done there. The city of Wilmington is also releasing some of our CDVG, Community Development Block Grants, for shelter services and rehousing for persons experiencing homelessness. This is done on pretty much an annual basis. It's a portion of our entitlement funding that can be used for this purpose, and so that RFP is under review right now, and those awards should be going out shortly. The city also awarded Good Shepherd some funding to replace generators and HVAC systems. This will help during emergency storms to help sustain the shelter services to make sure that during the hurricane, those folks have a place to stay. And then finally, looking at ways to work with housing providers that are, you know, the market-rate landlords. The city has participated with the Continuum of Care's HUD technical assistance providers as they look at ways to strengthen this supportive housing in the region. This is an ongoing effort through our HUD reps, and it's been a really great process and experience, and looking forward to moving on with that. Next slide, please. So speaking of the continuum of care, just sort of a high-level overview of where things are. So the KFAIR homeless continuum of care is one of 12 continuum cares in North Carolina. As you can see, there are some clusters, and then the rest of the state is called the Balance of State. Locally, the COC is funded through the city of Wilmington as the largest partner of Brunswick County and Pender County currently, but the service area is City Wilmington, Brunswick County, New Hanover County, and Pender County. Next slide, please. This is just a list of really their primary duties as the KFAIR homeless continuum of care. It is housed at the KFAIR Council of Governments, that is the lead agency for this. So when we think about our HUD entitlement funding, the city receives Home Investment Partnership money, HOMES, we call it, and Community Development Block Grant, or CDVG. The other funds that really are funneled into the state and local community for homeless services go through this COC here. And so they are the lead agency that carries out a lot of these duties, coordinating the funding, what's able to come down. They're the collaborative applicant that submits the funding applications. They administer their database, the HMIS, is what we call it, of, you know, all of the agencies provide that client-level data, so we have really a scope of who's out there, what are they experiencing, and finding their individualized paths forward. And then, of course, coordinated entry, which gets that connection to housing, kind of that last step. Next slide, please. Speaking of the size of the universe here, in 2024, 23 out of every 10,000 U.S. residents experience homelessness. Here locally, if you look at that graphic, it shares that 12 people out of 10,000 in the general population served by the continuum of care here locally are experienced homelessness. When we break that number out into a more localized context, that number is going to be a little bit different. The concentration tends to be in the city of Wilmington, so we'll get to that in just a minute. Next slide, please. For the point-in-time count, as many of you know, this is how this number comes to be. Every January, their entire country does what's called a point-in-time count. And so there's 10 nights in January that they have to, has to be completed on. It's required through the federal government to be in January, done this way, specific questions to be asked, and so what you're seeing here is the trend over time of this count. It measures both the counts, the unsheltered, as well as the sheltered persons. You can see sort of some changes over time. We always like to remind everyone that as you do better in your census, sometimes the numbers may go up, so it's not necessarily always an indicator of the actual number, but just how, sometimes how effective the count has been. It's also important to remember that this is not just the end number, this is just a good starting point, good start of the conversation. We know that there are many people who are undercounted or not counted, whether they're doubled up, whether they're living in their cars, they're harder to reach and harder to count, harder to access, so I just wanted to put that out there. Next slide, please. Here locally, over the past two years, we wanted to show the difference of the counts between New Hanover, Brunswick, and Pender County, and that's where we're saying, you know, when you look at our share here, you can see that we, in New Hanover County, specifically the city of Wilmington, tend to have the higher numbers. Next slide, please. So that's where we look at projecting what our homeless population would be compared to the average, what that would really equate to for the population of Wilmington being an estimated 127,000, it would be really about an average of 293 persons. Really putting that to, again, instead of the 12 for 10,000, it would be about 152. So we just wanted to sort of share that size of the universe and where things are. Next slide, please. It's shown here, in addition to the point-in-time count, there's a housing inventory count that also takes place in that time. So we broke down the different shelters, where there are beds, you can see the capacity and who's enrolled, and where they're located. Highlighted in blue are all of the service providers that have the beds located in the city of Wilmington. Next slide, please. So we did the same for transitional housing, again, highlighting what's in the city. Next slide, please. And then that permanent supportive housing. And so again, even though those folks are not necessarily considered unsheltered or homeless anymore because they're housed, they still are something that we've gone to track and make sure that we consider the number of beds that are there as people may move on, and how many beds are really missing in the community. Next slide, please. City funds have supported a number of these agencies over the past five years totaling over $5.5 million. As you can see, this includes The Sparrow, which is a 32-unit permanent supportive housing, Eden Village, which is again, permanent supportive housing. You also have some rehabilitation of Driftwood with the KFAIR Collective, but the rest of the funding has been really to support the operating and capacity of a number of nonprofits serving the unsheltered and homeless population. Next slide, please. Can you just tip next slide two more times, please? One more.
Messing with the...
Thank you. Okay, so as...
Change in source.
As you can see here, this was done during that unsheltered strategy to say, okay, what is, what do we really need? How many beds are needed? How many units are needed? And so that was just sort of that exercise that was done that we just wanted to share with you, just to refresh that, really looking at, there are rapid rehousing gaps, and that is getting folks into what could be market-rate units, just with a little bit of help, is around 800, and then that permanent supportive housing, it is a very specific, unique population. Looking at that and what's in the projected, at the time this study was done, it was looking at that there is a gap of about 25 to 75 units. That does include The Sparrow in there as part of the ones that are coming, new projects, and a few other things that are coming online. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to get into this, and we spoke about this at the last agenda briefing, but the Getting Home Street Outreach is another program that the city funds and participates in with the New Hanover County, and so shown here are some of the different duties and how they're broken up. Next slide, please. And then the Municipal Service District, as many of you hear about the street outreach coordinator funded with the MSD funds, that is Jack, as many people have heard and know him, and so just wanted to share how the city participates in funding his position through our MSD, as well as some of the service related to unhoused issues, disposing of trash from smaller unhoused campsites, cleanups, things like that. It takes about a third of the maintenance requests that the MSD is receiving. Next slide, please. So shown here, when you zoom out, is where all of these services and providers are located, looking from Onslow down to Brunswick County. As you can see, there's a very high concentration of services, beds, housing, in the city of Wilmington. Just wanted to sort of put that into perspective as we talk about what's going on. Next slide, please. Zooming back out into the state overall, again, with these 12 continuum cares throughout the state, this is just to show the number of folks counted in the pit, and then the funding that we receive, again, through the continuum of care, and just to show where we are as this region compared to the rest of the state, the numbers of folks that they're counting, as well as the funding that they're receiving to address these. As you can see, the COC receives some of the smaller amounts, especially considering the population counted, and so local dollars are being used to leverage and invest to help really address this in different ways. Next slide, please. Looking down in South Carolina, there have been some pit counts there, and you can see sort of what they're looking at as far as their pit count. This is the wrong, this was supposed to have a map, I'm not sure how that got moved, but there's South Carolina's continuum of care functions with four different continuum of cares, so it's a little bit different how it's structured. And so the one here locally near Myrtle Beach has a total count in 2023 of 1,060, so it's a much larger geographic area, but it's definitely a different number. They have a number of services, we've done a lot of research into what they're doing down there, and their continuum of care doesn't have paid staff, but they partner with an agency that has about 35 paid staff members, so definitely a difference in scale. Next slide, please. So that was a lot of information and a lot in the packet and whatnot, so just wanted to highlight a few things, that the city has contributed over $5.5 million in homeless services over the past five years, not including the cost to operate the Getting Home program from the police department. Again, there are about 200 shelter beds in the city, and then Salvation Army, when it comes online, will increase that total. And then the total point-in-time count was about 506, and about almost half and half was sheltered and unsheltered, again, just the folks that we were able to count. And again, a lot of these services are located in the city limits. So that concludes my presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Rachel, why is, go back to that slide with the funding for the COCs, and it's just kind of glaring that it says New Hanover County, zero?
Mm-hmm. The New Hanover County did not, as part of their budget, they did not renew the funding for the continuum of care. That was not part of their non-county agency funding, it was part of their vendor services that they have, and they decided not to move forward with bringing that.
Okay, and then just a couple more, if I may, and then move on. What days was the pit count?
The end of January.
January 25.
And was the warming shelter open during the pit count?
No, it was so poopy before.
Sorry, this is Andrew Stowe with the continuum of care.
Sorry. Oh, thanks, Andrea.
Thank you, and then, so do we know the numbers that utilize the warming shelter? Because it seems to me like it was close to that 200, that's kind of our gap.
Yeah, so the warming shelter, it operates where it's not just people who are necessarily unsheltered or unhoused, go in there, sometimes there's folks who are housed but may not have running water, or he, and so they have seen some refuge there. They had, in 2024 to 2025, they hosted 34 nights, and they had 175 persons sheltered on the coldest nights.
And then, just finally, you had a deficit in permanent supportive housing of 25 to 75 units, but you said that some of those would be built by The Sparrow. Can you remind me how many units are in The Sparrow?
So that, the total count was about 100 units, roughly, but that was, The Sparrow was 32 units.
Okay, so that, so the deficit...
Is still that 25.
So 25 to 75?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel, on the North Carolina COCs, and this is glaring to me, and I don't, you got down here that we have received funding for year 2023, I guess I have C O C 559, or 593 count? And I'm looking at some of these numbers here, like Chapel Hill, 148 only count, yet they're receiving 992,000, 1,200,002, Labor with 380, 871, even higher than us, Gastonia, 1 million, and they've got 466, 593, we're only getting 559 and 845.
Yeah.
Why?
If you don't mind, Andrea, since she runs this, can you stand up?
Why are we so much lower in receiving federal funding than all these other counties and parts of the state are receiving, seem like significantly more money with points and counts of close to ours?
So every year, we are given an annual renewal amount, and then you are, which is based on your current projects that you have running, how much you need to renew those, and then based on that funding, you're able to go after bonus funding to increase yours. So if you see between the two, next year, which has started to get, we'll get an additional 300 and some thousand. So at some point, and I would just put this out there, I've been here about two years, so some of this happened before me, we lost a big chunk because some of our renewal projects didn't get renewed, and so some of it is the strength of your competition report. I will say, prior, the amount of points you get for how you write the grant comes into play, and then again, one of our projects was extended caps where we could actually renew it in that funding cycle. So we've been working on undoing that, that's been my primary focus since I've started, is how do we unlock that box? So we went after bonus funding, so now that we have the next amount, our bonus funding, we can go after, will increase, but we are well below what's already been identified as our needs, so it's how the people are, and so it's how much your county needs based on what you have going on there. So we are, last, this fiscal year 2023, most of us are still operating on the Myrtle Beach number.
So is that part of the reporting process, too? I mean, when you say report, you said something about some of the reporting numbers, is that the different nonprofits that are part of this universe that are reporting numbers to HUD or whoever?
So are, a lot of what that is just based on is your, so we funded several permanent supportive housing projects, we will be funding rapid rehousing, and so a lot of it's how that, those perform, and whether they're renewed, how their grant applications versus, we have a collaborative application, and each project has it, and so we've lost some of our permanent supportive housing. One of our projects had extended too far past the fiscal year, and so they weren't able to be included in our funding that year. And so missteps from predecessors that, kind of complicated, but you can't, the way that you have to apply for things wasn't done exactly properly.
What do you mean by predecessor?
Just whoever was in my role before.
Okay.
We mentioned that a lot of the agencies, like, didn't report soon enough. Was there a way to catch that before?
There wasn't a, they didn't report, so if a project is extended, they were extended. So like, for instance, any project that comes to, so if you're anticipating another NOCO coming out for fiscal year 25, you can only, your new projects that end in 25, notice our, notice of funding opportunity, will come out from HUD, and so the only projects that you can have included in that are ones that end in a certain year. And so for one of our projects, it got extended past that year, so you've never got things in. I know that this sounds confusing, but it's taken us a lot of hard work around it.
So we have, we've got people that are doing the work, right, or agencies that are doing the work, but it seems as if, what I'm hearing you say, is that they're not, I want to say they're not getting the information to us, or we're not collecting that enough, soon enough, to get it to HUD?
No, all of our data is collected, it's all on time, we haven't had any issues. Those past couple of years, we've dramatically increased our data quality, we've had no issues.
So like a grant right of when, is that what you need?
I think we did, like I said, we did really well prior to the last competition, some of the ones that you saw that are why we were funded there, we got really low scores, but the last competition, those went up dramatically, and again, that's why our funding went up dramatically, the better you do on that, obviously. Your renewal amount, 90% of it, you're competing against each other, the rest are competing nationally with how you write the project, how you're able to perform, and so we did, some of the agencies on there did actually go down last year, whereas we increased them a little.
Okay, one second question. When you say you're competing against each other, the agencies that are working here in Wilmington, they write to you for funding, they're competing against each other?
So we have a local competition, so we get the COC funding, which is the number that was up there, we also get emergency solutions funding, and so as a COC, I want to reiterate, we are the lead agency at the cap, but the COC is all of our kind of collaborative efforts, so there is a local competition. When those notice of funding opportunities come out, people have to compete for those, and then we have a committee that ranks their applications, they have to perform, we look at data, is it something we need? Is it something that we've identified as a priority? And so they get ranked and funded according to that. So yes, and then additionally, the bonus money that HUD has in your amount, we are competing with every other agency across the country. So again, we were able to remain over $1,000 in additional dollars because our projects do competitively.
All right.
Thank you.
So the funding that the mayor called out is, well, we're in some of our peer cities and counties, there are agencies, we're saying, for, we should, because we've kind of tied up our process, so we should increase that funding to show our true need for one, right? So that means based on how many unsupervised we're serving in the community, basically?
That is part of the equation, for sure.
What's the incentive? Just fix the problem, funding is directly tied to showing how bad the problem is?
The funding is not tied to that, particularly, it's performance-based, so we get, there's set in system performance measures, so you're required to really low return home, so once you have someone house, they track whether they come back, they want you to have less of time home, they want you to give that process, we don't want to have folks that are prone because they're not going to office, we get judges to use these based on that. We get judges based on, let's see, first, there's, we have to track all of those, the better we are at those, that impacts that, so your incentive is the better...
That's also a part of the score criteria, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's great that the scores have gone up, but have you been able to identify additional opportunities that would allow the scores to increase even more, because what else would you need to see in order to be even more competitive to hopefully align with funding with our community?
Yes, so one of the great things we do is HUD has technical assistance that we don't have to pay for, we have to apply for, so we have routinely gone after technical assistance, and one of the big reasons, I think, our system performance managers on our data probably jumped, because we applied and were awarded some TA around that, so we worked on making sure all of the data was synced up, and prior to that, we only had two out of seven data shelters, probably first G L B, except for the last one, it all settled, so we are systematically doing everything that we need to do, we're exercising more than we go after, again, bonus funding, whatever it is, other applications that able, that's able to increase our renewal to make. So we've kind of pursued any action we can and worked kind of systematically.
We're gonna have to, I think, just to follow.
Sorry.
We have my...
Oh, sorry.
What about the question, as you said, when the low agencies are competing against each other?
Yes.
And let's say Group A loses to Group B, what do you do to help Group A increase their chance of winning?
Yes, we have a debrief process, so I should also mention, everyone that makes the funding decisions cannot be from agencies that are funded, so anybody that's on that committee can't directly benefit, so we are very aware of that transparency. Since we do have a debrief process, we do have opportunity to come, we have office hours to help improve their applications. One of the things we had happen this time around was, for instance, we had a project this quarter, High Own Street Outreach, but we have six or seven other street outreach teams that are already funded, so it doesn't make sense to duplicate those services and to spend our limited amount of funding on that, since we talked through, what's another gap that you could fill, and we're getting that filled, we don't want to supplant or duplicate services, we want to make sure we're stretching it. So that's the kind of conversations we're having, is these are the things we need, looking at our data, looking at what we have, who's best and the best place to do that. So yeah, we do have things in place to try to encourage folks that maybe haven't received it, and we do, we have a new, brand-new project this time, we had a new project last time, so we're always looking to bring new partners to the table.
Very interesting.
Andrea, I just have to follow up on, you talked about the return to homelessness rate, what is, what is your current rate?
It is less than 5%. So once somebody leaves our system and is permanently housed, they stay housed. The problem is just the opportunities to have that happen, and so that's not just, you know, a provider saying, oh, they didn't...
And so that's not just, you know, a provider saying, oh, they didn't come back to, you know, whichever. It tracks throughout the system, whether they are reaching back out, whether they find themselves anywhere. We do share our system with seven, six other COCs.
And I'm assuming that's a really good statistic?
Yeah, so nationally it's over seven percent, and we are under five right for.
Is, this includes Brunswick County and Pennsyl?
It does, I will say, when we broke out the numbers, we were certain things. Eighty-seven percent of our folks that are served are served in Hanover County. And then currently, it is a little bit of a tricky thing. All of our funded agencies currently are based out of Hanover County.
That was something that I saw, like we were in the map from the area, I wanted to, I can surprise you, but then, I guess it is surprising that Wilmington County has all, basically all the services.
Yes, we do have an increase. In Brunswick County, they have done a really good job of increasing their services. They do participate and contribute. A lot of times, they are taking folks from here as well, but they are looking at how could they maximize those things. And unfortunately, we haven't been in a place to kind of fund some of those things yet, but hopefully that continues.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rachel, what is the, what is the total seventy percent? What is, we have an idea of general ballpark, so what the total funding is, but it's twenty percent. But I probably.
Getting there. Our.
What you know over here is I'm hearing about cities contributing for this is only three.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just curious out of all the others in this sphere, how much is the total amount that we are spending here in the city? Because it all seems to be all in the city.
When I was reviewing our request for proposals for our unshelter, for the response homelessness, we're looking at operating budgets for our shelters that have applied to us, probably around like two to three million dollars, depending on what scope of services you're measuring in that annually, to function all of those ones. Additionally, some of these other agencies are functioning, like Warming Shelter, they function mostly on donations and in kind and persons. But they're looking at how do we project what numbers and how much that would cost? And they're looking at, say, like a hundred and thirty thousand. So some of these agencies aren't really focused just on that unsheltered and some of this conversation, so it's hard to wrap our head, but probably somewhere in the three to five million dollars annually overall for all of these agencies specifically for this.
And in addition to what we use?
Just because it's an annual budget. We're looking at new construction projects, depending on the scale, if we wanted to build another facility, that can range, you know, it'd be ten million dollars for a new facility, that may be, you know, thirty-two beds. So it depends on what's, what you're talking about with that. But generally, operating these services are somewhere in that.
And then, and then your low barrier entry, I know that I guess all of these service providers, especially ones that have a unsheltered, have some goals as to what they will allow or not allow in their facilities at certain times of the day. Well, I understand, but what's the story there on perspective? I know all the good shelters, but for a certain time, what are the conditions you can get?
It depends on the facility. Obviously, when children are involved, there's going to be higher barriers and standards to protect them. When you have typically more low barrier shelters, like Warming Shelter, things like that, that's not encouraged to have the children there for that purpose, to keep that low barrier. So there's a variety of, some are, most of them are, like Healing Place is lottery system where you show up and that's when you get a bed. Other ones are more, you know, regular where they have a waiting list because they're at capacity and they work with the folks to get them to the next day. So the standards depend on the facility and they range, but there's not really a good year-round low barrier shelter that anyone can just walk into.
Is that based because of choice issues? Do you have a facility that I'm treating, or some of the choices that you have, is that, is it tied to that? Or is it just based on what shelter you want?
Yeah, I think it depends on what the shelter is looking to do with their services. And so again, if you're, if you're looking to serve families, then you're going to have some restrictions. We don't really have a shelter here that's focused on low barrier for men, say, that someone could walk into. So that would be an opportunity.
Most shelters, you can't come in intoxicated or drunk or anything like that, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, and then, just looking at accessing homelessness, you talk about the cell phone, that's, that's a low barrier group, right? Those are individuals, and you're saying if they have a busted kid or they're going to be wanting to pay the rent, how? We have ones like that, that would get them off, put them back in house.
Potentially, yes. And, you know, that is the teacher's assistant that's living in a car over the summer because they don't have a paycheck. That's, that's that type of situation sometimes. And so that is like a low hanging fruit in that sense of it's a low cost typically, and it's something that's accessible. One of the challenges in getting people into housing is just the number of units available, especially at that price point. And so that's sometimes the challenge.
Can you say it is always like, okay, all part?
I have to look into that.
Okay.
But I have to involve.
Okay. Thank you.
Rachel. Also, one of those lines about the shelters, the mayor, Mayor Proton, I mentioned the grand opening ceremonies for the Salvation Army a couple of months ago. And I didn't see that on any of your lists, is, what is this situation, what is the status of the Salvation Army?
So they were not counted in the homeless inventory count in the last point in time count because that facility was not open. But it's about seventy-five beds that will be available once it's open. It's a mix of women, men, and families.
What is, what is preventing it from being open right now? Because it looked like it was completely ready to go a couple of months ago.
They have some sort of issue preventing them from their switching to back, see that they're working through.
Oh, got it, okay, okay. Thank you.
And then when they open, they'll be doing a phased approach where not all seventy-five will come in at once, they'll ease it into it.
Service providers, we consider the hospital of service provider?
They were, they were part of the conversation. There's a variety of ways that the hospitals involved in some of this conversation. They have recently funded Eden Village to have a respite home. So when folks who do not have a place to go after surgery or some sort of admission, they are able to stay in this respite home to help recover, and then that provides a way to get the case management to get them housed. So yeah, things like that, funding projects like that.
And any services that are there, I mean, I wonder if you can extrapolate any information from them? You expect if somebody's going to the OHS, somebody's going to the services, which also gets somebody that's a psychiatric downtown, they have to go to the hospital with the individual, do we know any of those numbers?
I don't have that available, but we can look into that, sort of, see what's available.
I think that would be something I would do, just to say, at least as far as, I know that that's one of the discussions that we had earlier on. We were talking about the plan to incomes many, many years ago, was the amount of services that they provide and open up, get maybe, you know, individuals that are going in and out, because that may be people that, people is, you know, people can go.
Yes. And then Michael Jordan clinics are also a way that the hospital has tried to help prevent that overuse of the ER by having those in some different communities to be able to provide that level of care.
So just to take your eyes, I know loose on here, I know we have a joint group with the county in regards to recovery with the opioid settlement, I'm not going to be able to see what it is, I mean, I don't know if it's still one hundred percent to recovery. For those folks that are coming here for recovery services, do we know what the success rate is for those recovery services? Do we have any idea? Ballpark, a national average, what is?
Healing Place's annual report on the website, twenty twenty four, had, I recollection was in the twenty-five to twenty-seven percent. It was a success rate, success rate.
Our opioid, uh, late death rate, that we have every time, it's basically the nation in for a while, has dropped significantly over the last couple of years.
So if it's twenty-three percent, I'm just saying, and I'm not, I'm just taking this as just an overall average of just all recovery, because I think it's a challenging thing to go through. Those folks that maybe have come here for the services and they fall out or they relapse, what, do we have an idea of what happens? Do they go back home? Do they have money to go back home? I don't know if you could indicate that some of these offices are spending money on, you know, to get people, you ask them at bars, to get involved, to get somebody away, or to get somebody to take it back home. How does that work? Do we have, do we have any kind of money set aside for those folks that made money to go back home that end up coming here for recovery services, but want to do another relapse? Do we have any idea about that?
The city does not fund anything like that at this time.
Service providers make.
Yeah.
Service providers make.
Is there a need for that, is what I'm asking? I don't know, from the service providers, that's something I guess you're going to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
It's something that, that, if somebody wanted to go home, that came from another county or another place, they wanted to go home, would we do that?
Yeah, relocation type of.
Yeah, but some of these people say, I want to go home, but I don't have the money to go home. I have family there, I have somebody who wants to, you know, whatever the case is.
I just wanted to ask, because I know I've talked to, I've heard you struggle about this before. I don't want you to have to get us, I'll repeat your answer. So what, in your report that you do, you do record the last known permanent address of the people that you're serving. And what is the percentage that are coming here from out of here?
I do have it. The percentage that's from New Hanover County is eighty-seven percent out of all of our services.
So eighty-seven percent, just repeat this to the microphone, of the services provided by the COC are going to people that their last known address was in New Hanover County? Thank you.
I appreciate the slide, the city spent five and a half million dollars to have them so directly to have them so, so we had the affordable housing fund that was a big plus million dollars a year, I think that can assist some of these, some of these items. We spent five and a half million over the past five years. I read an article this morning about the city of Wilmington's ten-year plan to announce this. And that article was written in two thousand eight, seventeen years ago. In that article, a lot of these kind of state meetings, discussions were had. Would it be possible, since you guys are bringing this follow-up, to figure out how much the city has spent in the last seventeen years on the same thing?
Yeah, we can absolutely look that up.
I just need to like say, oh, in the eighties, I was, I got involved with the Cape Fear Gospel Rescue Mission on Wolf Hall Street. We had a facility for thirty drunks. That's basically what they were, it's hard to raise money for that kind of ministry. But we provided a place for them to come and catch their breath. And a lot of them were transient, they were moving south, they were moving around. And during that time, I got involved with Saint James Home and Shelter. Good Shepherd built their facility at eighteen Mark. And the people that would come in there, you're right, they couldn't come in intoxicated, they had to check in by eight o'clock. If they had a job working at a restaurant, we would honor their excuse from the boss or the owner of the restaurant, they'd come in as late as ten. Had to get them up in the morning at six, get them back out on the street. This only operated during cold weather months, October to March. I see, I did that for about eleven years, two nights a month. And I would see maybe a half a dozen people every year. But the rest of them were very fluid, they were moving, they'd get better. And on a few occasions, we would have a mother with children, we'd house them somewhere else in church. They were busting their chops to get into these programs. A lot of people aren't. They're not, they're not, they're not out there trying to get in these programs. And we talk to them, and there might be some momentary good that comes over, but then they relapse back into it. You can take, you can take, I know Judge Burnett used to get tired of sending people to the streets in his early days. And that's when he came up with the idea of that, I'm going to that. But you can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink. And a lot of these people, I mean, it's not like we're throwing good money after the bad. But I've sat in so many meetings just like this, and it's worse now than it was ten or fifteen years ago, yeah. But I was on the council of government for fourteen years, and I went out on some of those counts. And it's not an accurate count, there ain't no way it could be accurate, you do the best you can. But I've had many people say, man, y'all, I know there's a camp over so and so, and there's two hundred people living there, we didn't get those people. And the count would be more accurate if it were done during the summer. That's when people are out, hell, when it's cold, when it's thirty degrees, they're going to find somewhere to get in. They just are, I mean, and we welcome that, we want to help that. But we're, we're, we're trying to scratch an itch that we can't get to. It's frustrating. I don't see any homeless people here, they weren't invited, we didn't think to do that. There's a lot of answers out there, there's a lot of homeless people that could probably give us some insight as to what the hell we're trying to do here, what we're trying to accomplish. We sit up here, we got up to learn, took a warm shower, had breakfast, come here, we're good home tonight, families, all that stuff. It's, it's kind of like, a guy told me one time, if you've got a ball in the middle of the table, and my side's black and Luke's side's white, I mean, never going to agree, because I can't see the other side of this ball. That's what, that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish here. We're trying to see what's driving some of these people. We've got a great system that we come up with, came up with some time back, I sent a policeman, a person that is used to dealing with people like that. And, and hopefully it's doing some good, but we're just, you know, we're not peeling the onion skin back. You know, we've got to hit down to the core of this problem, and it's going to have to be something drastic that we do. It's just like affordable housing. Yeah, we're, we're, we're doing it, we're doing a little bits at a time. But this homeless situation, this morning, I was talking to a guy coming to work at the corner of Coles and Mark Street. He put his drink down, had his little dog there, put him in the thing, and he gets to sign it up, he goes, doing what he does. That's his job. I don't know that he wants to be helped. A lot of people just don't walk that, uh, you're going to say, reflect them, oh, I find. The best thing I've seen happen in a long time is Eaton House. They got some hardcore people off of the street, and they're happy. They got, they have rules over there, they can't screw up over there, because if they do, they're right back out in the woods. Those are the kinds of things, whether we do it ourselves, or with the county, or with, with some good folks out there, like a good doctor that did Eaton House, things like that. That's what it's going to take to get some of these people off the street and into some kind of shelter, permanent. And then a lot of those people, they're going to catch their breath, they're going to stay in there, they're going to keep on moving. But this is the magnet, you know, this is the magnet where everybody comes to. Now, I don't know that they come here simply because of our psychiatric care or mental care, they come here because this is where the people are. Tourists come here. They sit out there on the road, some tourist goes by and gives a guy a twenty dollar bill, hell, he's got no incentive to go and find a job. He stands out there and it makes his money. So I, I don't, you know, I don't, nobody in this room knows what the cure is. We've all got our ideas, boy, do we hear them. But we can have these meetings until the cows come in and we feel good about it. That's what these are, these are feel-good meetings. But we're not getting anything accomplished. We can look at all these statistics from all these cities and COCs, and God knows, I pray about this all the time. We, show us the way, Lord, how we can help these people and get them off the street, get them into houses, and quit using the drugs, and get themselves help. I'm rambling here, but it's so frustrating that we see it, we want to do something about it, then we get angry at them because they mess up our places, they do this, they do that. But at the end of the day, they're human beings, we got to do something to help them. And I don't, God, I wish I knew, I wished I had an answer. But those are just my observations from forty, God, eighty, forty years ago. Damn, that sounds long to me.
Well, let me, to Charlie's point, why couldn't we, why couldn't we do a point in county in some months?
We absolutely can do an off-cycle one in addition to the required one. Yeah, so the one in January is required by HUD, but we could locally do our own, ask the questions we want to ask. I know the Community of Care has also talked about really getting into interviewing people with lived experience to really understand, not just the numbers, but the reasons why, the unique experiences that people have. And that's something that they're looking forward to doing over the next year, of really engaging in that. But yeah, absolutely, we can do it, an off-cycle.
What would that cost then? Why do you agree we do that, put through volunteers? How would that work? I know, I know we have some idea where some of the camps are in the, in the suburban areas of the, of the city, which obviously have downtown. We can go to, we have the shelter. Could we do that fairly easily?
Yes, it's my understanding that it's fairly low cost, in the sense that there's a lot of volunteers and donations, but there may be some administrative costs associated. We could put together a budget and find that out, though.
I think we ought to do it.
Yeah, there's a note, I don't know if it's true still, I mean, I know it's true, but there used to be a saying that said, a lot of people in America, two paychecks. Yeah, there's a note, I don't know if it's true still, I mean, I know it's true, but there used to be a saying that said, a lot of people in America, two paychecks, and be out on that street. And hell, it's probably one now, you know, so, I mean, that, that's, that's a daunting thought.
I have a couple of follow-up questions to some things that you said, and, um, the first one, I'll, I'll go into Rachel, which is, it looks like in the twenty twenty-four timeline, in the month of May, you did the Voice of the Consumer piece, and you did speak to some folks who had been, who've had, at least in the past, experienced homelessness. Can you tell us a quick summary of what you learned there?
Yeah, a lot of, uh, that, those conversations were just really folks who wanted people to understand that they're not just a stereotype, they're, you know, what, what got them there, their experience, what type of services they need, what they're looking for. And I can provide some of those statements, but that's really the summary of just, this is how I got here, this is my unique circumstance, and this is what I need to get to the next step. Uh, so it was a lot of those conversations.
And I, when we talk about stereotypes, I mean, there's, there's, you know, disrespectful negative stereotypes, but I think there's also, like, the buckets that we try and put things into systematically. And I know a lot of times we're talking about people who have mental illness, who have addiction, and folks who don't have either, and they're just poor, and they just need resources to help them get back on their feet. Are those buckets consistent with what you were hearing, or was that group challenging that belief?
I think one of, okay.
Yeah, there, there was statements recorded in our door report, indicated they wanted the public to know that they're not alcoholics and addicts.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, to them, you know, for many of them, it was to your point, they're, they're working for, uh, what we know at the COC is that homeless, the majority of them are fault, are first-time homeless. You know, their first time, meaning they were housed until something happened, that one paycheck or two paychecks away. There is another population that does have, you know, substance misuse and addiction challenges. But, but we heard from the Voice of the Consumer when we engaged that community in, in small focus groups, is that they wanted the public to know that not all of them are that way.
Right. And then Charlie, following up on what you said with that specific ministry where you wanted to focus specifically on men who were using drugs and alcohol, what was the thought, like, why was that group chosen?
Well, it was, it was basically, it was a Christian ministry.
Sure.
And, uh, some, some very successful businessmen in town were, were members of it, came from churches and what have you, different, different religions. And, uh, and I, I, I got pulled in, I guess is the right word, and then they all rotated off, and I became the chairman, and couldn't find anybody to take my place for eight years. Uh, so we would go, uh, my house manager was a retired sergeant in the army, and we'd go underneath the Third Street Bridge on the Cove nights, and we'd drag them out. They'd be in there asleep, they'd freeze to death. And we'd take them in, we wouldn't have a bed for them, but we could get them inside where it was warm and give them a, a bologna sandwich and some soup, and, and they'd be all right. We didn't have any criteria, I mean, if somebody was out there and didn't have a place to go, uh, they didn't have to be a, an alcoholic or a drug addict, we'd bring them in. And, uh, and sometimes, and we had a, you know, they could stay, we had the thrift store over there at Bethan Castle. They sold the house here because it became so valuable, the real estate, and now they have beds at Bethan Castle, that, that, they call it the Rescue Mission of Cape Fear now. Um, they started getting some, some local money, I think. But we, we didn't have, we didn't have that, I mean, if somebody came up to the door, they'd be welcome to come in.
And the reason that I latched on to that when you said it, and that caught my attention, is this is a big spectrum of a problem. And it was a big spectrum of problem when we started having meetings back at the beginning of twenty twenty-four. But in a way, like, let's be honest about the fact that it's come to a head specifically because of, um, the, the specific group of folks who have been vocal about what we've been seeing downtown. And so when I think about what we, what we talked about at our last city council meeting, and who it is that we're seeing downtown, the group that you stated, adult men who may or may not have some sort of addiction or mental illness issue, that kind of is the group that brought this to a head, which led to us having follow-up meetings about it. So when we were talking about, um, additional day shelters and specifically men's shelters, that helps get that, that group of folks off the street downtown and potentially connect with the service provider. So I'm curious about that that is one of our long-term resources, because I know that we're looking for a quick answer. Um, and, and when I say a quick answer, I mean, as to what brought this conversation to a head, I mean, obviously, again, it's a spectrum, but that piece of it is something that I think is missing, because we talked about how a lot of our shelters serve families, uh, and serve women, and especially there's a mental balance component to this. Um, but if that seems to be the visible group that brought this to a head, it, it is timely that you brought up that previous ministry.
The, the, the other thing, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that eighty-seven percent of the people in New Haven County, before Good Shepherd built their nice facility, uh, we used to discourage these, uh, like, first fruit ministries and some of the others that were eating people on the street. We used to discourage that. I mean, because it was, it was, they were already here, we're trying to spread them out, I guess. And then when Eighth and Martin opened up, you know, it was a little bit off of there, they hadn't walked there. Uh, and a lot of wanted to stay in the, I mean, that's why I said many of them liked to get into the arch and decks and stuff, because this is where all the action is, and whatnot at Eighth and Martin. But when we had Saint James', we'd look at their ID, and all their, all up had the address of Eighth, Eighteen, I believe it's Eight Hundred Martin Street. So they were New Haven County or Wilmington residents, that's what they used so they could get mail, and they had to have an ID if somebody asked them, they'd show that, and it always had the same address on it, they don't know where they come from. I know Chief Evangelist says a lot of the people that they're dealing with on the street, they're not from here, they're coming in here from where else? I mean, this is, this is, this is just, I mean, this is a destination for people, whether they're coming here to get our services or not, they're coming to the beach.
And to that point, Charlie, and I want to thank you, um, for all the work you've done over the years, I think that's really important to note, and, and as Councilwoman Joy noted, that, um, you know, we, y'all both know, noted that, you know, we've had these studies over the years, um, and, and it seems like the problem's not going away. But I think that we need to, some of those charts on the, on the numbers need to overlay on the population growth and growth in the cost of housing, because I think those are two factors that, um, have, you know, really speak to the fact that we're not getting ahead on the numbers with the homeless population. Um, you know, the fact is, we've doubled in population since nineteen ninety. So of course, we're going to have more people, and then the cost of living, the cost of, of, of rent or mortgages has more than doubled. And so, um, yeah, that, that's a, that's a goal that we're chasing that we're probably never gonna get to, but it does speak to the reason why some of these numbers continue to go up.
Yeah. I guess, looking at the numbers, and looking at the services, and looking, we are, we are the service delivery for Southeastern. And the city, if you look at the population, it was only going to four four two percent, just because geographic, we're very small geographic area, and everybody has a Wilmington address. Well, we're from MLK Parkway to Seventeenth Street, essentially from the river to the end of the coast to water, but that's the city of Wilmington. And if you look at that geographic footprint, there's not that much land available anywhere. So we're attracting more, I believe that the system has been overrun by the amount of population that's come in. And I think, and just, this is an opinion from me, based on the services that we're providing in the community is attracting people here. And somebody may say, in, in one of the surrounding counties, we may not have that service here, but they have it in Wilmington, you may want to go there to try it out. And that ends up bringing more of that, more of them into the community, which means the citizens are asking us, help us fix it. And at the same time, from the monetary point of view, it seems like everybody's looking at us to say, you, the city, this small geographic area, you folks fix this, it's your money. At the same time, we've got roads, bridges, public safety, we've got a lot of things on our plate here, and we can't do it all. And, and, and we can do what we can do, but we have an issue, and it's, it's not going away, it's getting bigger. And, um, you're gonna have to have partners who are gonna come to the table, they're gonna try to help you or not, and if you don't, then it's gonna be what it's gonna be, and we'll be able to put whatever money we can into it, and we have, we have demonstrated that we've put money into this. It's just the issue is, I think, we have overrun the system, and that's why I wanted to put Jacksonville on there, because I wanted to see what they had up there. They have about two hundred and some thousand people up in Onslow County, and Myrtle Beach is, Fordham County is four hundred and sixty-one thousand people. Chief, he, he, he indicated at one of his meetings, that we, years ago, had a number of them being bussed up here because the service delivery in that area was not as great. Now, they have a thirteen-county area, right, Rachel? Is that correct? So it's a thirteen-county area there in Fordham County, so it's not only Fordham County, it's Georgetown County, it's a lot of different counties there. So if you have services up this way, you're gonna gravitate some of that this way from the south, and you're gonna get some from the north, and you're gonna get some from Bassett's going county and state. Uh, and it's all kind of trickling here in Wilmington, and somebody will say, well, that's because of problems in Wilmington. No, I think part of it is, yes, but I don't want to say it's all. And so how do you deal with that side of it? Because it's, there's gonna be people that are gonna ask us for more money for shelters. We've done, I think, I, I think Rachel correct me, are we the only entity right now between Lake Savage River and what we're doing at Sparrow, what we have put in permanent housing wraparound services? Are we the only ones that have done that? Or has somebody else done that too?
As far as local governments, we're the only ones.
We're the only ones, so we're the only ones that have stepped up to even do that part of it, which by the way, has, for, for example, there, there was a lot of concern from the neighbors there about that facility there, there at Greenfield Lake. And this turned out to be a great place because the services are there to take care of the needs of the people, and there's not any kind of shenanigans going on in that particular area. And I would say the same thing's gonna happen with Sparrow based on what Katrina's been able to do, but we're very limited in what we can do. How long did it take us to get Sparrow, about three years, four years?
It's taken a few years, yes.
Few years, so these projects are not easy to put together, but you have to put the commitment. I mean, the city put up the property and donated, what, over a million dollars?
Two point one one.
Two point one million dollars, this is not, this is not little money that we're throwing out there, so, um, you know, I think we've just overrun it, and I've got some real concerns. And I did a ride along the other day with a couple of the police officers that the chief offered it to everybody to go out there and just take a look at what else is happening, not only downtown, but in the suburban areas, which is just as dramatic. And some of the things that we've saw out there, it, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty dicey. And whatever's causing it, I think is because we are the magnet and we have the service delivery here. And look, I don't have any, no disrespect to any of the service providers, they do a phenomenal job, and a lot of them are working sometimes on a shoestring budget. But, um, it, it's overwhelmed us, and I don't have a specific answer, that's why I wanted to make sure that we had, kind of, kind of give us the overall view of what we're dealing with, the services that we have out there, the amount of money that we're spending. And can we spend it in a much more efficient manner with some of our providers that I think are doing really good work? It's just like when we do an evaluation of all of our service deliveries, we try to find those that had the capacity to deal with a lot of the issues that we're dealing with, because we have to leverage tax dollars, uh, to do it. So I, I, I'd just say, this gives us a pretty good, pretty good, um, point of where we are right now.
Yes, sir. Um, you know, Councilman Mark mentioned, we didn't invite any of the homeless here, and that's a good observation. But I've noticed we've got a lot of providers here, and I, I'm just curious, is there something that, like, is beating in your chest, and you would say, I wish somebody had said, then you say it now? There's something that, that we're missing, because, you know, you're there, you're, you're in the trenches, you're the guys that are working with the population that we need to help. And I was understanding that, um, much of the issues that we have are from individuals that are chronically homeless, you know, both that are on drugs or alcohol or something. But is there something that we're missing, there's something that you need to say, that, you know, you don't walk out the room and go, gosh, I wish, could've gone there and said so and so? All right, so you got to.
Look.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to invite anybody here who wants to come to the meeting at two P M tomorrow at the healing place to discuss one of the issues we're talking about here. That is, people from out of the county who, who are coming here for services.
All right.
And then they drop out, and they end up homeless in Wilmington.
All right, thank you for that announcement.
So two, two P M tomorrow at the healing place.
And, and that's a great point, you know, I just wrote down, so I won't forget it. Let's say you take somebody, and he goes, man, I appreciate you coming up to me, I want those services, will you help me? So we take him and we get the services. Once he gets the services, what happens then? What, what do we do with them then? What, what do they do with themselves then? They've got, they, they see the light, you know, they, they've got some service, they maybe get some continuum of, of some, some follow-up care, but, but they're, he, he's still in the same economic situation he was when he was out there doing the drugs or the whatever. What do we do then? Because they, you, you're right, they're gonna go right back if they can't get any follow-up help or some kind of support, what's his, what are his options? Her options?
I think, you know, and you mentioned something about, you know, when that person gets their breath, you know, it may be, it may be that the opportunity that we give them may be the step that helps them to get their breath, and it may be connecting with family, or connecting with somebody, you know? Um, I think, I don't know, Rachel, you mentioned, what is the percentage of those who get services and don't come back? You said something like.
It's under five percent of the folks who are placing housing do not return to homelessness.
Placing them in housing, though.
Right.
Lord knows, if we had enough housing for that, you know, that'd be a.
Right.
All right, anybody else got a, something like this?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I also appreciate the fact that you mentioned, Charlie, that, um, you know, we don't apparently have a lot of homeless people in the room. Um, I did go out yesterday, and I, I talked to a few people, and I know it's a really small sample, and I did let them know that we were meeting today, and, you know, what did they want people to know? It, it's a small sample, I only got to talk to three people. But, um, you know, one of the things that speaks to this question of, you know, how do, how do you stay housed? Well, first of all, if you don't have an address, I talked to one young woman, um, and this is the woman who was featured on W C T on the fifth, I recognized her, and so I wanted to talk to her. And, um, she did get housing briefly, briefly, um, and, and became homeless again, and because of that, she lost her ability to collect her, uh, social security disability income. And, um, so that, that's part of it, you know, until we, until somebody has a permanent address, they have trouble collecting their benefits and being able to maintain it. So that's, that's one thing. I talked to two other, um, gentlemen who, um, you know, and by the way, all three of these people said that they're, they became homeless in New Haven County. Again, I know it's a small sample. Um, I talked to two gentlemen who, and, and none of these people were on, you know, appeared to be intoxicated. Um, and, um, I talked to two gentlemen who said, I told them about this meeting, but this isn't a great format either for people to just show up, you know, we, we're not having it in a format. Yeah, so, um, I just told them that we were having it, what, what would they like people to know? And they said, um, you know, we just need a roof over our heads, you know, that we just need housing. And so, um, I'm just passing that along, but, um, and also I appreciate the work that the, uh, the task force did earlier, uh, getting the voices of the homeless, uh, into, into the narrative, so thank you for that, too.
It's the mayor.
Yes, sir.
What's, what do I know?
I mean, I mean.
I would, uh, just wanted to chime in, I've just been paying attention here, and I, I think we couldn't, we can't gauge the type of help that we'll provide based on if a person will relax or not, if they have some, some sort of, uh, substance abuse, alcohol abuse or not. I think what we need to do is, is create a model or mechanism that will help all individuals going forward. I think that's the idea, so, you know, we can, we can try to gauge the amount of help that's been done in the past seventeen years, fifteen years, twenty years, so be it, but, um, homelessness is, 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 it's kind of like crimes, just wanna be there. But what do we do as, as the donor embodying? And what I've taken away from all the stats that have been provided today by Rachel and her team is that we've been in this business for quite a, quite a while, and we're the lead agency in, not only we have over counting, but roles we continue. So how do we bring other folks to the table to help us continue doing work to help us improve? I think that's the bigger issue, you know, we can, we can, we can talk about our appearances and, and how things are perceived to us, but let's be honest, it doesn't matter. How we perceive a person to be of, of a mental state, physical state, you know, if they're standing on the corner as a, as a gimmick or whatever, that, it's not truly our concern if we're genuinely here to help.
I'd like to wait until he go. Bring, bring him up for me. And that, yeah, yeah.
You agree that I start with the people that are in the Eaton House? You know, what was, what what happened? What was the, was the, what was the magic moment that you just said, this is what I want? I'm tired of living in the in the woods. I knew one, he got a check and he bought a little Honda generator so he could have electric blanket when it was cold out there in the woods. And and he he was, and and he's at Eaton House doing great. Uh, and and not just the Eaton House, there are lots of other avenues should be. But I I think that's a magnificent idea is to go right to the, right to the crux of the matter. And and so, you know, if you could do something today, what would it be? And let's go, let's start from there and then move out.
That is something that, like I said, the C O C is planning on doing is having more of those conversations so we can provide updates more regularly with some of that and.
We do have, yeah, so we do have a lived experience committee. We effectively solicited help from folks that have received our services. We've had folks that are in our, some of our permanent support housing is not site-based. It's actually vouchers so that they can be anywhere. We do have, um, folks that, when we talked about our P S H T A, one of our current residents was a part of that. So we do make that appointment effort. Um, and then a lot of what we do when folks first reach out is ask those very same questions. We we try to be much more trauma-informed of what's brought you to us today and and what do you think is the most important thing? Um, and you make a really good point, uh, when folks can live somewhere for three hundred dollars a month within their kind of fixed income and be able to have support. Uh, one of the things I forgot, my, this is, um, that was asking. One of the things we are actually judged on is our, um, participant's ability to increase their income. So two, once we have folks somewhere supported, um, it's a lot easier for them to work on those things, to partner with our workforce development folks, our setup ups. Uh, but to your point, if you don't have an address and you can't take a shower that morning or you don't know where you're gonna use the facilities, it's really hard to be at a job all the time or be able to be presentable enough to keep that employment. So that's a big part of the support. But we do, um, regular focus groups, but it's also, um, an actual committee of folks that have received services that are, um, currently receiving services telling us what they think as well. So that is really important.
Step up. Do they work with, I know that the Ashby Center there, for the veterans, the old shape of school there. I I know that they are in there helping those veterans try to find jobs and getting their job skills rep to try to take some of the jobs that are out there. Do they also work, I'm sure we could check for all the other non-profit centers that are doing this kind of work, trying to help them find jobs.
Yes, yes, they do.
Okay, which is a big organization. Used to be, Phoenix Department of Ministry, Transfl- Transfl- Grover to step up and they seem to have a pretty good program in regards to kind of connect jobs with the people that need them.
Absolutely.
Is that the only one out there you know which?
It's probably the largest, that's that's working that. There's some other, maybe some some other resources, but that's that's the largest organization in this area.
May I?
Yes, that's.
The other thing that, uh, the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room is that this is so important, we wouldn't be here. But you quoted a hundred twenty-seven thousand people living in the city of Wilmington. I have to be concerned about their quality of life as well. And when we have these folks out there that are wreaking havoc, I'm not talking about the homeless people as a whole, I'm talking about the people running up and down Front Street, not attacking people, but, uh, uh, being overly aggressive, leaving horrible messes on the street of people, uh, physicians out here around, uh, the the medical community, sleeping up in the alcoves on the weekend when they're not keeping hours and leaving a horrible mess every Monday morning. We had, we had great discussion in our last council meeting about that. This is also something that ties right in and we've got to address that. That's not something we've been, that Luke brought up, the the ten-year plan for ending homelessness. That that we can't have a ten-year plan for ending this. This has got, this is something that's got to happen post haste with getting our, and of course, the downtown is the magnet, uh, and it's everywhere, but we've got to clean up and 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 make these people that are out there applying their trade, uh, with their business and had never been a small business person, it's a challenge every day. And then to have this kind of, these kind of things happening, it's a real handicap. And we as the city, and we have got to do something quick about that. It can't continue to go on. We heard business owner after business owner last Tuesday night, they're the ones in the trenches. And it's, I I I would not like to be in their shoes. And we've got to do something about that.
I I said, I'm just getting back on that for a moment because I think it is important. I think it's driven into the larger discussion that we're having. I appreciate this discussion and I'm willing to have as many of these meetings until we, you know, as as you guys want to do. I said it last week and I'm, I'm open to ideas, I'm open to 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 thought processes on ways we can make it better, how we can, you know, increase services. And, um, we obviously are leading the region, but there have been a lot of ideas around the table today as to, uh, uh, maybe additional services that we may need. But shouldn't we also prioritize the safety and cleanliness of our public spaces? They belong to everyone. And we need to say, uh, very clearly, um, uh, that 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 our public spaces and our our sidewalks, our streets, our, uh, the businesses, um, should be, the interests of these businesses should be safe, clean places for everybody to enjoy. Good city once and we can walk and we can chew gum at the same time. And I agree with with, uh, Councilman Robert Park, this is something that that we can have these meetings, we can continue to come up with plans, but we need action and we need action quickly. And I hope that this September meeting that we that we moved it to, we take that action and and move, move in order. So I know we're gonna have additional conversation about that and I'll.
Rachel, I don't think you got any to this, this was at the very end, with the, the average, is this per person, thirty-five thousand a year is about what it's costing us?
Yeah.
As a community, per homeless person?
That's generally the cost of homelessness is, uh, about thirty-five thousand dollars a year per person on the whole system, not necessarily just the city of Wilmington and its services, but the jails, the hospital, all of the different services.
Okay, on the high definition, I I'm just curious. I think, I know we get a certain amount of funding from, uh, for some of these services. What is that definition per capita for a community? Is 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 there a number? Like, what did, what'd they say per, you 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 mentioned it earlier, like, uh, uh, one point two percent or something like that?
No, that's the, that's just what they're count, during the point in time count, they're saying, on average, this is how many people.
I understand that, but.
They don't have a set number.
So so there's not a, so that, so we're not above the national average? Or we below the national average or we about where the national average is? I guess with that, I guess there's some sort of a definition that ties some funding to that, which is mind-blowing that we don't get the monies or the capital in the past based on maybe what our population is. Is there a number there?
The disadvantage is that we are seeing the number of folks in the point in time count in New Hanover County, more specifically the city of Wilmington. But as the C O C as a whole is rated off of the whole region, so that's Pender, Brunswick, New Hanover and the city of Wilmington. So when you look at this, that chart, how we compare to the overall average, we're at twelve per ten thousand, where the national average is twenty-three per ten thousand. So we're below, but when you look more locally at the city of Wilmington, we're about twenty-five. So we're above it.
So we're above the national average?
Mr. Speaker, speaking of what you were just talking about and and what Charlie was talking about earlier, that we should, you know, um, the cost of hospitalization and talking to the people at Eaton Village because one of the reasons that Dr. Dalton founded Eaton Village was because of the number of people that he was seeing that were using their emergency room as their shelter. But well, even as, even just to get out of the cold, you know, they they would come in with their ailments because they had no place to sleep. And, um, you know, I did tour Eaton Village when there was a woman that just happened to be getting her home that day. And so, you know, and and hearing her story, she came here to Wilmington area because her mother was here and her mother was elderly and needed her assistance. So she quit her job wherever she was from and of course came here to take care of her mother. They were living on her mother's social security. When her mother eventually passed, she had no money coming in because she didn't have a job, she wasn't old enough for social security herself. She didn't have a job, she lost her home in addition to losing her mother and she began living in her car. Because of that, she started having terrible back problems and started showing up at the E R when she couldn't drive anymore because her back problems were so bad. So, yeah, that that thirty-five thousand dollars a year we are spending on hospitals and jails because, just because this person couldn't, lost her home through no fault of her own. So, you know, there is that situation, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Right.
I just want to confirm, we checked with the groups of people in the two other rooms and there's nobody in that room that wishes to have any comments.
Is there anybody else here that would like to say anything? This is the time to do it.
I just got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way hard on doing this now, like, is this that you decipher out those different groups of people that are homeless? Because we know that there are homeless for different reasons. Um, the only reason I'm asking that because some of the ones that stand on the side of the road with their signs, they know they need X amount of dollars to pay you that night wherever you're staying. And they have nothing to make to any person to do anything different because, hey, I'll use this three dollars today, I got it, I'm going back, I'm done. Are we deciphering out those people, like, after body comp or the one like we talked about? Or the one that, for whatever reason, they are living in their car? Or the one that does have a problem with substance abuse or whatever? Are we dividing those groups of homeless type people out? Because we're, they're homeless for different reasons.
Yes, that's part of what happens with some of the H M I S. That's why the data information is so important to be able to really see the different causes and reasons and how, because that's how the solutions are are determined.
Okay, because that's what I was thinking, so if you did that, then maybe you could come up with a solution for like that person or a person that's just out there because, hey, it's just easy for me to get out and get this money from you. That person, if you can decipher out, you know, pan out who that person is, then what else can we do to help you so you don't have to do this?
Good boy.
Mayor.
This gentleman's in another room and wanted to make comments for council.
Hi, I'm Tony Perez, I'm Living Hope Day Center. I'm one of the one that, um, my wife and I run the homeless shelter downtown. It's just a day center. A couple of things, I guess, can I say first and foremost, there's about twenty people next door and it sounds like another room. Perhaps we could consider that whenever this conversation is gonna come up, we need to plan for more space so that we could all be in the same room. If I could ask that, I think that makes sense. I I speak with eighty, ninety people come through my day shelter on average the last few months, every day that we're open. I keep hearing this continual thing that they're being bussed in, that they're coming from somewhere else. Firsthand experience of dealing with them, that's not the case. Most of them are very local. And and in fact, I think the numbers stated that eighty percent of of people have a local address that, with all due respect, it feels like you asked for that question, you've got the answer, it just doesn't fit the narrative. So that we keep saying they're being bussed in and I would tell you, and admittedly from firsthand experience, I don't see that happening. And then, uh, the other thing I I guess I'd like to say is, and this may surprise you, um, as a serial entrepreneur myself, I certainly do understand the difficulties that the downtown district faces with the homeless population. And I'm very sympathetic to that. If if I were running a business, I wouldn't want to come to work every day to a mess. I mean, I do, that's what I do. Um, but I gladly pick it up and I go about and do my business. But that's the business I'm in, so I understand that. I would propose that rather than creating new regulations, let's look at what already exists. And if it really is just a handful of folks that are creating the issues, let's deal with a handful of folks. Let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. I'd be glad to feel any questions, I wasn't expecting this. I didn't think we were gonna be able to make comments, so I wasn't really well-prepared for that. But, um, if there's that one burning question that you'd like to ask when somebody who's in it, in the trenches every day, I'd be willing to to address some questions.
I'd like to ask, of the eighty to ninety that you see, are they consistent? Are they the same eighty to ninety?
So, much like the issues with the downtown, there's a small percentage that is pretty consistent. Of that group of people that I see on an average day, most of them I don't recognize. I haven't seen them very many times. Several of them, a a a small percentage, a handful of them, are what we, what's being referred to as a chronically homeless, yes. But the majority of them are not. They're transient, they come in, they resolve, whether they sub-resolve, um, through our case manager, whatever, they get services and they take care of it. Whatever it is, it's the issue for the day and they move on.
What, thanks, John. What do, what does Living Hope, the typical person comes into your facility, what do you do for?
Living Hope is a faith-based, first of all. So our first objective is just to be a hospitality group that welcomes people in and gives them the safe place to be off the street for a little while. We do have a case manager that works part-time, um, that we try to connect people to services with. But for the most part, you know, computer access, we actually have a little section where they can do art for folks who are so inclined, is just to, you know, you guys can sit around and doodle and do whatever you want at home, so can I. But if you don't have a place to relax and get your mind settled, um, then then addressing the bigger issues in life are virtually impossible. So that's our objective, is just try and get a place of rest and and help them.
So it's, it is like a day center?
It's absolutely a day center.
Okay, I mean, so there's not shower facilities or food or stuff like that?
So we provide meals every day.
Good.
We partner with some other folks to to provide, uh, we don't have shower facility, um, but we're working towards laundry facilities, stuff like that.
And when you mentioned word transient a while ago, what did you mean by that? Just people just come in, word of mouth come into you?
Right, my my phone rings constantly because it's the phone number on Google. Um, and and the number one question is always, I need a place to stay tonight. But when I say transient, I guess what I, what I'm not saying, to be clear, is that they're being bussed in from someone else and say, hey, I just got here from River Beach or I just got here from Raleigh or wherever, um, can you help me? What I mean by that is they're local people who come in because of whatever scenario that put them in a difficult position. They work towards resolving that issue and then they move on.
Okay, that's good. There's there's a point of contact right there for a number of people who, exactly what we're talking about.
Wherever it's, my staff has sent an email to every one of you and invited you to come, but I have yet to see anybody.
You mentioned that you have a case manager.
Yes, sir.
Who, who sponsors the case manager? Is he, are they from social services or is that just a volunteer?
That is a, that is a paid staff position, um, that we have budgeted in our line item. Our number one funding is from the endowment. Uh, but we also have other like-minded people who, uh, believe in the mission of what we try to do and they they just help fund what we do.
You said case manager, manager is only there half-time? I mean.
Yes, sir, right now, that's that's where we're at. We have a part-time case manager that's open about half the time that we're physically open.
Is that because of fund, lack of funding?
It's a challenging question. I I believe I could raise the position, uh, the funding for a full-time position. The right person that I have is available part-time.
Okay.
I could probably hire somebody else, um, but I have a really good case manager and, uh, we're working on how to get more time from her.
Last question I found. But what's, what's the, the results? Like, when you work with a case manager, you have these statistics that say, we've worked with eight guys, seven of them did so and so whatever.
So I I should clarify that our level of case management is probably a little different than what perhaps you might be thinking. Because we're not housing experts, we're just hospitality people. So our objective isn't so much, I mean, only the objective is to get them housed, but we're really more concerned about can we get them in contact with family? Can we get them to their medical appointments? Can we do different sorts of things like that?
Basic.
Basic stuff.
Okay.
That when you're so overwhelmed, it becomes really hard to do on your own. Yes, sir.
One, I appreciate you being here, I appreciate the ministry that you guys do. I I think it's very important, uh, very important work that you, a lot of these folks are doing. I know it's difficult work. Uh, you said that the phone, your phone rings constantly and a lot of folks are looking for where they're gonna stay this evening, need a place to stay tonight. That's not something that you, you guys are able to offer.
We are strictly a day shelter, we are not an overnight facility.
Well, I think, and I believe Dr. Dalton had brought forward a, a short-term emergency shelter option of sixty, ninety beds, what was it, Tom? We were working on that about a year ago.
Looking for location.
I was, I was a huge proponent of that because it's a massive need, uh, that we need in this community. But I believe, and I can go back and look at minutes, that the majority of council didn't want to do it because it didn't subscribe to 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 Housing First. Did it ever come to council?
That's incorrect.
Hold on, I still have, I still have, I still have. Hold on, I still have, I still have, I still have a fore. I've had a lot of accusations around me over the last week. And my families had to see a lot of it. And so I apologize if I'm a little bit more boisterous than usual. Walk us through the process there, why wasn't that ever brought forward to council?
I'll need to go back and check. I know there were reports provided to council, brought to council, it could take many forms. I believe we submitted reports. A big part of it was, if you recall Dr. Dalton, I'm going to skip some context for everybody that's here. What I'm recalling is his proposal to use the Coleman complex for a location setup sheds, about 80 to 90 sheds. Couple issues occurring on that property. First and foremost, it's used as the police evidence compound. So we have diggers there, the building been used by the fire department to storage. The other part of it was, we had some concerns about, when we talked to Dr. Dalton, a big part of it was looking at zoning. But also at night, not having 70, 80 people once the facility closed in the morning, just dropping out on 16th and 17th Street. That number seemed to be pretty large. And then there was a anticipation of a need. In fact, that facility's been used right now to house our urban forestry unit. They have the equipment and staff over there. But it's not that we couldn't make it happen. It seemed to be that that location given, and this information was submitted, as I recall in writing, with analysis and everything else. That location also had a higher concentration, high concentration of street traffic already, as well as we had low-income housing and whatnot. We felt like having that much more concentration, dropping out into that area would probably be a disservice. That was just staff's opinion.
Was that ever brought to council?
I believe it was submitted as a written report.
I don't think we ever did it up or down.
It wasn't that kind of action. I can double-check. It's been two and a half years ago, two and a half years ago, maybe three.
The location was bad, but the concept was great. And what proper should have happened, and I'm sure I'm as guilty as anybody, is not pushing it. If that location doesn't work, damn it, that's the final that does.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to say that at the same time, we were looking at a different type of shelter. I know Councilmember Joyner traveled to Greensboro with Ms. Schuler to look at their temporary shelters that they put up, their pod concept, which I believe was Palat homes. And that there's a problem with both those and the God pods that were being proposed by Dr. Dalton. That it had to do with the commissioner of insurance, that we couldn't leave them up for a certain period of time because they didn't meet building code. So there's some, there were some technical issues why that never came back to council that we need to work through before we can come up with a tiny home kind of concept.
Yes, that was my recollection as well.
Well, Tony, did you finish? Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak just for a couple of minutes. My name's Hillary Vaughn, I'm a psychologist. I'm the clinical director of Physicians and Mental Health here in Wilmington. And we specialize in treating folks with primary psychotic disorders. And so that is people with schizophrenia, schizoaffective disorder, bipolar psychotic features. Those folks that you regularly see in the emergency department, the folks you see in the state hospitals, the folks who significantly struggle with maintaining any type of stability in their lives, including health. We have three large teams, all of which go into the community to provide psychiatric care. Our doctors, our nurses, our social workers, our therapists, our employment specialists, housing specialists, peer support specialists, all go into the community, meet these individuals where they are. We meet them downtown, we meet them in their homes. If they have them, we'll meet them in street corners, anywhere that we may need to. And each one of those teams have housing specialists, full-time, dedicated. It's not required by the state, because we provide all Medicaid services. It's not required by the state, but it's mandatory that we have them for our folks to have stability. Some of the greatest issues that we see in helping those folks with those psychotic disorders to maintain that housing is the fact that they are also victimized in this process. We are part of a group, multi-disciplinary team meeting with DSS that is constantly working to overcome the barrier of taking these vulnerable individuals who are also perpetrators of crime at time. I would never say that they are not. But having those folks be in homes with subsidies, with tenancy supports, and then having people come in and victimize them themselves. And so we are regularly having our individuals finally get into housing, work, start working on, possibly not using subsidies, possibly start looking for a job. And then people, there are groups of individuals in this town that identify these folks, come into their homes, use them to sell drugs, use them to run guns, and then ultimately our clients leave because they don't feel safe. And so it is a small portion of what you guys are talking about, but it's also a very significant portion because we are constantly having to rehouse in substandard housing, but housed just because there's crime being perpetrated on them as well. And so what I don't want to do is come in and say, let me make it more complicated. But if we're talking about some of those really sick individuals in this town, the folks that we don't want to have to be downtown on the sidewalks, that we want them to be sheltered, we as providers also need assistance in overcoming those barriers. We're working with a small group within the MDT with APS, some of the head APS, through DSS with multiple other entities. But it's something we could significantly use your help in, in helping take a small portion of these folks and help keep them in safe housing.
How many?
I would probably say of, I've been doing this for 16 years. And in the past five years, we have probably had, I'm going to guess on both of my teams that serve about 120 clients, we probably had 30 people on each team, so 60 people total, have to be, leave their house whether they were scared or whether they were forced out, or whether they were evicted because of the perpetrators that came in and go back out on the street, go to Good Shepherd, go to a healing place, stay on the street. And you know, some of the folks you guys are talking about are my clients. I know they are, I can't tell you who they are, but I know that they're mine.
How many of them are out on the street right now?
I think the last total unhoused we had was 8% on each team, 100 clients, 16, probably, probably 20, 25 folks that are unhoused, that are going. And that tends, we tend not to have as many people unhoused in Penrith, Brunswick, I guess it's a generic. I would say probably 75% of our services are provided in favor, can we?
So those available, availability of the housing is a huge problem.
It's catastrophic problem, it's not just huge, it's catastrophic.
So if there is an incident and you guys are called,
Yes.
and taken to the hospital,
Yes.
or evaluated. I've heard that, you know, the mental health department there is full.
Always.
Cherry Hill is, Cherry.
Cherry Hospital, yes.
It takes maybe a year sometimes to even get somebody there.
Yes.
What other place could you take them if they're having an episode?
Well, well.
Is there a place in Jackson, I thought there was a place in Jacksonville?
That Dick's closed down.
Dick's Dick closed down.
I tried calling the other day, the line's dead.
Is there anything in Brunswick?
No. So what happens is our folks, anybody with psychiatric condition that needs to be inpatient, needs to be committed for involuntary commitment, or they go involuntarily, will go to the emergency room. And at that point in the emergency room, there's a team of individuals. If it's determined they need to go inpatient, they send out to all over the state. They could end up at Holly Hill or Vineyard, Good Shepherd, Light House down in South Carolina. If they are in the ED and they're arrested themselves or others, and they can't find a bed anywhere in the state after 72 hours, if they're back to their baseline, which is not well, it's just stable enough to where they're not posing a risk of themselves or others, then they'll be released back on the street. There's plans, they call us, we go get our folks. We don't have anywhere to take them during the day. We let them come hang out at our office, we've got coffee and television, that sort of thing. But at night, there's nowhere for us to be able to take them. So we drop them where we think is the safest place. We say, let's ride back around in the morning. We've even tried to have our individuals found and capable to proceed if they're arrested for a felony. We have a lot of people found and capable to proceed. And they sit, well, they'll either sit in jail for a year before they get to Cherry for a capacity bed, or they will just drop the charges because they don't need to be in jail. I've gone back to safekeeping in the jail myself to evaluate all patients and to say they need to go to central prison. And they repeatedly say these people don't need to be here. And I tell them, I agree. We, this is a system of criminalization of mental ill. We also don't have anywhere for them. And so I've even gone in and made recommendations so we can then go to central. And the client that we have in there has said the charges are dropped and they're back on the street. And so we have a really close relationship with the ED and the hospital. And they will get our folks in as quickly as possible. Even local, anybody other than Cherry can't keep people very long. And so that stabilization period is challenging. And then when they get out, a lot of the times, if they don't have anywhere to go, it's to a healing place. It's a bed at a healing place. And then we have to go back and try to find them and pick them right back up. It is really, from our perspective, it's many, many systems saying they don't belong here. And we're just trying to find a place to help them belong. There's a lot of things that have gone into this. I think the Department of Justice Settlement that North Carolina is in with the United States federal government is also contributing because it's taken away some of those intermediate levels of care. I think that's a much grander conversation. But I think that we're seeing some increase because of a lot of different ones. I haven't heard that particular piece brought up. And so I'm going to make sure that part was heard as well.
If you could snap your finger and solve the problem today, what would be the first thing? Housing?
With hesitancy, yes. That I would say it would need to be a combination of housing and greater access to stabilization and care. In residential or supervised settings. So that there's the opportunity to help for stabilization for my folks. That's not the answer for everybody, but my job is my folks.
And the people that you're dealing with, ma'am, are they employable? I mean, they're credit.
Every individual's employable. We have, we actually follow a model called the Individual Placement and Sports Model. It's designed for people with severe and persistent mental illness that is a supported employment program for that particular population. We have a large team dedicated to that and then other specialists within. Every one of our folks can work and work is a huge part of their recovery. It's, it takes time. Sometimes we start with two hours a week. We have benefits counselors to make sure they don't lose their Medicaid, to make sure they don't lose their social security disability benefits. But every one of them can work. It's a matter of finding that good fit for them. Not everybody goes to McDonald's.
They need stability.
They need stability. And it's really hard to find stability in a world where I'm a psychologist and sometimes it's hard for me to find stability.
Are you connected with us anyway? Do you have partners?
We are not formally connected in any way. We show up everywhere we possibly can to try to advocate for our folks. I have been invited to city meetings as an act provider to try to say, what do we need to do to be able to help increase the access? The answer is going to be the same thing that everybody hears, here's funding. And Medicaid last week just got another 3% cut across the board. And so we are trying to, we're trying to have really quality individuals that are educated and that are dedicated to this population, work in a world where it's, we really, we don't accept any private insurance. We are completely Medicaid, Medicare, and uninsured. And so keeping those folks, we train people really, really well, but keeping them is the challenging part. Because they need to live a successful life too. So you know, having, having all of those folks, increasing the ability to be able to cover the cost of what it takes for public care that we need to do, because these folks also deserve to live in the community. But they deserve to live in the community in cohesion with everybody else.
Good point.
Any other questions?
I'd like to ask a question. How many specialized beds do you need? You talk about housing.
So if you talk about housing from a housing perspective, if I can take just the unhoused folks I've got right now in our care, we, just our agency alone, we could probably use 20 to 30. If we're talking about long-term stabilization beds, Cherry needs to open up the beds they've got available. And they don't have the funding for it either. It's not Cherry saying no, it's a state, it's a very significant state issue of not having enough. They have the beds, they don't have the staff to run the beds, is the last report that I heard. So from a stabilization bed, that's probably a question I don't know that I could intelligently answer. But from a housing bed just today, now if then you expand that to my folks that are in unsafe housing, that it's, that they are elderly or they're physically disabled as well and having to climb up rotten steps to be able to get to their apartment, I'd probably need another, another 30 to 40.
Were you having conversations with Tufton about what the county was?
Was I having conversations with him?
With Tufton over the county?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'll link you up.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Rachel, the number you gave us of about $50, just taking into consideration what the endowment's putting in, do you have that number?
I don't have the direct number for Just Homeless Services, but.
I guess what I'm trying, I'm trying to get to is, based on what the federal government is getting and what we're paying from the federal government, what we're paying maybe from state, what we're paying from county government, because county government has public health under their jurisdiction.
Responsibility.
And responsibility. And then what we're putting in and what the endowment's putting in, just to kind of get an overall snapshot, not just of what the city's doing, but what's collectively being put into this. I would like to see, because I think the number is larger. I mean, yes, we've done, we've put a lot of money into it. But I just collectively, the number is, I think, much larger. And if there's a way, even from your private groups like Dr. Dalton's with Eden Village, I know the city made a contribution, county made a contribution. A lot of that money was raised privately to be able to do that. Just collectively, if we can get a snapshot of that, because I think the number is larger than that. And because we also have other players in this arena. We're the ones that are talking, by the way, now because it's on doorstep. But to kind of get an idea of what we're looking at, I would like to have, if you could take, ballpark, I'm not saying you have to be right on point, but close to it. I think it'd give you a better understanding of what, how much money is being put into this.
You know, one of the problems that we have with this whole thing is it's so easy to dislike these people. It's so easy to, because you see them out there, you just, you know, here you are working and the things that some of them, some of the results of some of the big caps and what have you. It's so easy to dislike these people. And that's so wrong. You know, you have to look, you have to look past that inside your own self to imagine your own self being switched in places. I mean, that's something I struggle with, but when I hear, you know, when you get down to it, you just feel. Somebody else want? That's just a theory. Hey buddy. Please do.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Alan, so I can be the second director of the KPR Council Governments. I just wanted, I've been listening from the next room and I just wanted to say one thing that I think is important to help frame sort of the question. I think the problem with homelessness is largely a problem with a game of musical chairs. Right? And so there aren't enough chairs. And when people don't have a place to sit, they're on the street. When people need a place to be, everyone has to be somewhere. So think of the chairs perhaps as the shelter capacity. And Rachel, I think you sort of glossed over a little bit in your slide, but there's a slide about shelter beds and the shelter capacity. And what was there, five or so in the capacity? So shelter's an important part of the solution, I think, because people need a place to go. But we've got day shelters, which put people back on the streets at night. We've got overnight shelters and then maybe folks need a place to be during the day. But shelters are temporary, they're always intended to be a temporary solution. So we need shelter, we need a place for people to go. But what we really need is the housing component, right? Because we need people to get up out of the chair and make room for the next guy. Because as we've learned from some of these statistics that we've seen, the first time homeless numbers are much higher than the folks who are able to exit. So there's always more and more people who need chairs. But what we, you know, and so we do need more chairs, but what we really need is a place for people to get up out of the chair and be housed. I think the other thing that is important to think about, how we're thinking about this issue, substance abuse, I'm sure it's a big issue. But we're not talking about people who are, who have. But we're not talking about people who are, who have addiction issues who are not on the street. We're not talking about criminals who are not on the street. We're not talking about people with mental health issues who are not on the street. The common denominator is these folks have nowhere to be. And I think, you know, to the discussion about the ordinance, which I know is not what we're talking about, but something to think about is if there is nowhere to be, if the shelter has no capacity, if there is no housing, then where? Where do we put these people? And if there's nowhere to put them, then perhaps we have to be comfortable with the fact that there is going to be homeless on the street. But if not on the public property, then we push the problem on to private property owners. People must occupy space. This is a very difficult and thorny problem, there is no question. But I think we have to recognize that, you know, and we heard from the prior person who spoke to you, we don't have anywhere for these people to go. And we have to accept it and we can't blame the person that there's not a chair. And I think if we think about the question of musical chairs again, you know, this is an affordable housing game that we're playing. And the folks who have the least income, the folks with the most challenges are always going to be the slowest to get to the chair. They're always going to be most challenged in this housing question. I have no answers for you. But I think that some of these points that I'm making are maybe helpful for how to think about both the problems. That's all.
Thank you, Ellen.
I'm happy to hear any questions, but I, like I said, I don't have the answers.
We got questions.
Anything else? Very, very welcome, thank you. We're back in session now, so we're going to have to do another roll call real quick. May I put Tim here?
Yeah.
Councilor Ann Barker here.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Spears, are you here? Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Spears?
You'll catch up.
Councilwoman Waddell?
Here.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Here.
Councilwoman Jordan?
Here.
Chair's here, here on the counter floor. Please come back and talk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As a follow-up to some of the discussion at your last council meeting, our city attorney, Dr. Everhart, and interim police chief put together some additional information to try to clarify the proposed camping ordinance that was discussed last term as it compared to some of our existing ordinances and some of the perhaps difficultier challenges with the interpretation of the existing ordinances as it applies to real-life situations, which is what the officers who would be asked to enforce, whether it's existing ordinances or new ordinances, what they would have to encounter on the street. So turn it over to them to lead this discussion.
Thank you, good morning. As I said, this was more just an inspirational session as a follow-up to previous and participation in your September meeting. Those were nice. A lot of the questions that Chief and I got last time were about how to just differ from what we already have. And so I thought it would be helpful to put together a chart. And I noticed a lot on this chart, which you got in your handout as well. And I can send the chart separately to everyone after the meeting if you'd like to take a closer look at it. I sent out one previously, but then I added some other situations to it to make sure we were comparing apples to apples. And so this is the result. And this, I'm not going to go through all of these. But just to show you, if you want to look at any particular situations and see what would be covered, what would not be covered currently, and under which city code violations they currently would or would not be covered. So if you want to take a look at that, if you have any questions right now, I'd be glad to answer. Give you those for the purposes just to go through some of the situations that you were asking about at your last meeting. And put a little bit more of a, for those of you who like charts instead of slides, then maybe this would be a little bit easier to look at. Next slide, please.
For the next few slides and the things that are available in your handout, these pictures are not Wilmington, obviously, they're not Wilmington pictures for these next few slides. But I wanted to put some illustrations up just to give you a chance to talk and look and see some of the things that we're talking about. Because I've had a lot of different questions from several of you about, well, what would this situation look like? What would this situation look like? And so these are mostly for your information, but we can go through them fairly quickly. If you've got any questions, please let me know. Let the chief know if you've got enforcement questions about how that would work. But the first picture would be if there were an actual tent for camping on city sidewalks or streets during the day would be the first situation we would look at. That would not be allowed under our current ordinances. And there are multiple ones that could be applied depending on what the situation is. Obviously, if there's no one there, there's a lady present in this picture. If these tents were unoccupied, then that would be unattended property that could be used for littering. But we do have an ordinance for no tents on city streets or property. And we also have obstructing a street or sidewalk. And so those would be the current ordinances that the police officers could look at if they wanted to cover this situation now. Under the proposed ordinance, section B of that ordinance talks about unattended personal effects not allowed. But it actually does not address, and this is one thing I wanted to point out, it does not address camping on city property during the day. If you'll recall, section A, it's for 10:00 P.M. to 7:00 A.M. So this would actually not be prevented by that particular ordinance during the daytime. It would be prevented at nighttime under the current ordinance. So I feel like that kind of was a little bit confusing in the last presentation. So I wanted to make that clear. Now, one big part is if you have to clean up, a lot of times encampments don't just happen on a daily basis. They build up over time. And so having to remove things overnight would, the thought would be that it would make it so that these things wouldn't develop again every single day. So that's how that proposed section of the ordinance would then address that. You'd have to take down any tents and get rid of all your possessions on the street overnight. So encampments like the one that are shown here wouldn't be allowed unless somebody was coming in en masse and setting them up every single day. Next slide, please. Next slide, it appears to be a parking lot. You've got a far part there. Right now, camping on city surface parking lots either during the day or night, I say allowed. There's nothing in city code right now that would prevent the scene that you're seeing here from somebody being in the median or in an area of the parking lot during the day or night. Under the proposed ordinance, this would not be allowed. It would be allowed on most city property during the day, but not on city surface lots. Section C would prevent that from happening on city surface parking lots. But otherwise during the day, it would be allowed on most other city property. Next slide, please. The next picture that you've got would cover camping, sleeping or laying in city parking decks during the day or night. Currently, that's not allowed because we do have an ordinance, although we don't have one that addresses city surface lots. We've got one that does address parking deck, section six dash eight, conduct in certain, in parking decks that would prevent camping, sleeping or laying in the city parking deck because you're, which is also a public safety issue. You don't want to have people in the right-of-way of vehicles that are maneuvering through the parking lot. Under the proposed ordinance, it would not be allowed in city parking decks, section C. But camping, again, would be allowed on most other city property during the day, but not at night. Next slide, please. Next slide, if this were a city bench, then monopolizing or sleeping on city benches or seating areas during the day. Currently, that's not allowed. We've got a specific ordinance for obstructing city seating areas, 11-13. That is, this situation is not addressed in the proposed ordinance other than monopolizing or sleeping on city benches at night because that would be city property. So during the day would not necessarily prevent this situation in the proposed ordinance, but would at night. Under the, if you're looking at nighttime, our same ordinance would apply day or night. Next slide, please. The next slide is one that I've had several questions about, this type of activity. You see clearly, one gentleman, possibly two out of the three in the picture are sleeping on city sidewalks or right-ofways or sidewalks during the day. Currently, that would not be allowed because you're obstructing city streets or rights of way. However, I will tell you that even among individual police officers that I've spoken with, and I'm sure that Chief would tell you the same, what defines obstructing is always going to be a question. It's always going to be an issue of discretion as far as the officer's concerned. Obviously, there's a concern, if they have their feet in the streets, sitting on the sidewalk like this, that's a danger to them, that's a danger to the motorists who might be trying to park where they are. So there's a public safety and a welfare aspect to it that the police could address. But at this point, if you're looking at obstructing in the same sense that you would look at the word occupy, which I know Ms. Andrews has had some questions about, in the sense of it meaning to possess or use property to the exclusion of others, then it would apply to anybody sitting or being stationary and preventing other people from using the sidewalk area. When you're talking about a street or sidewalk, that's supposed to be for movement, free-flowing movement back and forth by the public. And so if you are quote occupying or obstructing or monopolizing a particular area, then that would be seen as being covered under section 11-13. But again, all of your officers, you've got 200 police officers, and they all may view that how much of an obstruction is enough to characterize being charged with a class three misdemeanor for that. This situation is not addressed during the day in the current, in the proposed ordinance. Sleeping on city sidewalks or right-ofways at night, again, not allowed under section 11-13 under the proposed ordinance. It would not be allowed if they're sleeping under section A, which is no sleeping on any city property overnight. So a lot of times there is a difference between day and night. Next slide, please. And you'll see, this is actually the same slide, specifically as opposed to sleeping. This addresses the obstructing and a little more, just what I mentioned about the fact that if their feet are in the street, the police could already address that issue under a general welfare situation because that could be a danger to them or other people with the street. Next slide, please. Next slide, supposing, and I use this to illustrate the potential for sleeping or lying in entrances to private property or businesses. If this was a private business, then the city would currently be able to enforce or general statute against that for trespass if the business owner was to call us. A lot of the, and what I noted on here is that many business owners don't want to press charges though because then they have to go to court and take time out of their day to say that that person wasn't allowed to be there. And so a lot of times trespass doesn't get used as much as you would think that it could be because the business owners don't want to do the follow-up and have to go to court against somebody who probably may or may not even show up to court. So trespass would seem to be a way to address a lot of issues, but a lot of times it doesn't work out that way in reality because of that factor. The proposed ordinance doesn't address this day or night for private businesses because it's only targeted at city property. Next slide, please. This next slide would be, and if you would imagine that this is city buildings as opposed to private property during the day. Currently, we would trespass someone like that if they did not move from a city, from a city building. City manager has authority to delegate that trespass authority to, and has in the past, to the individual department directors who have responsibility over the particular buildings or facilities. And so the city is able to trespass people who are blocking entrances to city buildings during the day. And we have done that or have had that addressed in the past. Under the proposed ordinance, this would not be allowed because section D talks about specifically entrances to city facilities being for ingress and egress only. So sleeping and lying at the entrances of city buildings would not be allowed during the day. Similar for at night, the proposed ordinance would not allow this under the same section D for entrances to city facilities. However, the city itself, because there's no disruption of city business or preventing anybody from coming in and out of the buildings after the buildings are closed, does not have a specific ordinance that addresses that at nighttime currently. Next slide, please. And some of the things that I have spoken with the chief and with city manager about how could we, whether the new ordinance, proposed ordinance goes forward or not, the thought that the P.D. and the city attorney's office, through our police attorney, through myself, could work together with the P.D. to provide some additional training for downtown, downtown specifically officers. But for all officers, we could go to roll call, we could, the folks that are on the getting home task force and talk to them about all quality of life ordinances, not just this particular one. And when I say quality of life, that would also include noise, public urination, defecation, aggressive panhandling, public consumption, the other things that our downtown business owners are also complaining of, whether or not the new ordinance goes forward or not. I think those things are not, our police officers could probably rattle off the top of their head all of these state laws against rape, murder, theft. You wouldn't expect them to be able to have the entire book, 300 pages of city ordinances memorized. And so I think it would be helpful whether or not the new ordinance passes to train our officers and especially the ones working in downtown about what their alternatives are. The new ordinance, if it did go into effect, you can see from the chart that's on the first page, there's probably a handful of six to 10 ordinances right now that they're looking at and having to go through in their head, which they probably don't have memorized. This would, as the chief mentioned previously, be another tool in the toolbox because it would be one ordinance that would be applied to a lot of different situations instead of multiple ordinances. And so could help in that way as far as being another tool in the toolbox. So, but either way, I do think that we've had a lot of turnover as far as police officers and that city code and especially these quality of life issues are not something that we focus on a lot with training for those officers. And I think that my office could help with that and could do a lot better job of assisting with that and cooperating with the police department to get that done. So I'd be glad to take any questions, but a lot of these are just for your information in preparation to, for your next meeting. And I wanted to kind of, because we got a lot of questions at that meeting. And so Chief and I would both be available to talk about any enforcement or legal issues that you've got or we can answer those questions at your next meeting, however you would.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that the pictures weren't from Wilmington because I think that's important. It looks like from your chart that there's just a handful of things, sleeping that are not currently in violation of our current ordinances that the new ordinance would prohibit. And those include sleeping in city parking decks day or night, sleeping in city surface parking lots, sleeping in your car on city property or right-of-way overnight, and sleeping or lying in entrances to city buildings overnight. And then the one that you didn't address in your chart, which is occupying city-owned or leased property between 10:00 A.M. and 7:00 A.M. And so, and the problem I have with the word occupy is that it's undefined and vague. It could apply to, you know, somebody just sitting, leaning or standing. And it risks arbitrary enforcement and uneven application. It has a disproportionate impact on vulnerable groups like the unhoused. So that's my concern is that if we don't. if we don't define that word, we probably should leave it out just because of the vagueness principle and being able to.
Is that on this list?
It's not. That's why I'm bringing it up. So maybe you could address that.
So the ordinance that Mr. Waddell asked to have put forward is the one that mirrors the county. And that's the language that's in there. Whatever language council wants to have or not have in there, you know, my office doesn't take a position on that. But in general, we do use the word occupy throughout our code in other situations. In the land development code is where it's used probably the most as opposed to talking about occupy residences and things like that in the LDC. But we also have 60 to 70 more instances of using the word occupy throughout the rest of our city code. And when we use it in those senses, although not applying to human beings, you know, it's not used in this particular sense because we haven't had an ordinance like this before. It is used for, say, if you put, install a pole or a fixture or something like that in an alley or a sidewalk or a street or a right-of-way, meaning that what you're putting there or even a temporary fixture is occupying space to the exclusion of other things. And so we don't, for instance, allow our downtown shop owners to put out big, huge racks of clothing and things like that for, they have to get a permit and they can only do it for two hours a day, even on the property directly in front of their places because, and we define that as occupying because it's to the exclusion of other people because there's supposed to be public rights of way. And so if there's an issue, we use other words at other places. We use monopolizing, we use obstructing. And so if there's another word or phrase that council would prefer to use, you know, we use other words in our code as well. But occupying, as far as what we currently use in our code, the definition would be to use or possess to the exclusion of others. And so, and as I mentioned, the purpose of a city public right-of-way or street is to allow free movement. And so if you are taking up a space and not allowing that free movement, even if there's room for you to go around, you shouldn't have to on a city, on a city right-of-way. You should be able to move and go forward wherever you want to. And so that's the theory is that when you're talking about obstructing or occupying, is that someone is being somewhere to the point that someone else is not allowed to use it. That's kind of where we are on our benches when we talk about occupying city benches. It means monopolizing and putting your stuff somewhere and underneath to the point that nobody else could use, could use that bench or that sidewalk or that street. And so, but whatever term that council, you know, decides to use is certainly fine. But we do use that term in other places throughout our code. No, there's not a specific definition of it anywhere else, but that's how it's, that's the definition of how it's used in other places.
I just, can I just follow up and ask the chief? So as far as these new things that are being proposed, such as sleeping in cars in your, in city lots overnight or sleeping or lying in city building entrances overnight, do we have a lot of calls for service for things like that?
Well, calls for service on city lots, no one's going to call, that's an observation. Officer will make an observation of that. Blocking the entryway into a city building, again, no one's going to call on that. We'll see that and then take action on it. So the calls we get are usually from business owners who are, that they're sleeping in the entryways or whatever. We'll see them occasionally in the parking decks, you know, in some of the parking decks. Managers may call on that. But normally, we respond if it's complained of or conspicuous. It used to be the three Cs when I was out on the West Coast. Complained of, conspicuous, and commercialized. Well, commercialized doesn't work on this. But if it's one of the two Cs, we're going to take action, okay? Now, the action would be preferably, A, you get up and move. We don't want to take enforcement action on these folks. We don't. You know, we want them to get up, we want them to leave and move somewhere else. If they refuse to, which most won't, you know, they'll voluntarily move. You know, we'll trespass them, assuming that it's public property or if it's a private entity and the owner wants to trespass them. And eventually, you know, we may give them the ticket if they're doing the same thing over and over and over again, okay? We don't want to arrest them, okay? That's the absolute last thing we want to do. And so, you know, so to answer your question, a lot of that is conspicuous, we see it, or complained of, which is a call for service. That's usually how we respond to all of this.
So most of the surface lots are pay lots, is that correct? That are owned by the city?
Yeah.
So somebody would have to pay to park there to be able to sleep in their car?
Like, they could come camp over here in your parking lot right here.
Okay.
Okay? And we wouldn't have authority to move that at this point, okay? Luckily, they haven't come here to camp. If they do, it opens up that Pandora's box.
So you haven't really seen that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, so again, it's complained of, conspicuous.
Thank you.
Chief, most of the calls for service, how many do we know about what we get for nuisance and stuff of this nature? I don't know if you have a number on it.
Yeah, I gave it to you the other day, and I'm trying to remember what it was.
Was it 1,700?
Yeah, I think I got it here. Some years back, when we first started putting benches out, we came back and put that armrest in the middle. That kept somebody completely laying out. But I take it they still get on either side of that armrest, take it to the bench and sleep.
It's not so much of a problem with taking up both sides of the bench with their bodies anymore, so like all the things, yes?
I could get you that number, and I can forward it to you folks. You know, there's the downtown portion of that, but we have a citywide problem.
Sure.
Okay, it's not just downtown. The hospital corridor in Wilmington is off the hook. You know, the business owners, doctors especially, are just complaining consistently. So, but I'll get you that number, and I'll break it down based on downtown and then citywide, what those calls for service are.
I had an opportunity to run one with the guys that are dealing with some of these encampments. And they had on their visor a warning ticket. I guess the first, when they walk onto the scene, especially if it's private property, they said, hey, especially for property, private property, I'm going to call them to give them a warning that get off the property. And they think, oh, then you should leave.
Yeah, you did it.
Yeah, I mean, the debris's there, is left there, which the private property owners.
Occurs.
On that, on the private ordinances, on the ordinances for the cleanup, especially if somebody's ended up on your property, you get better care of, or whatever, that's up to the individual.
Yes, sir.
And then we, if they don't clean it up, then they get a notice of violation from us.
Pretty much. The only exception to that would be if there are individuals that are charged with either littering or dumping, and they do wind up going through the court system, then the cost for that could be tacked on to whatever probation or sentence that they get, but that very seldom happens. That's usually more of the case in like a commercial dumping situation, not just a regular littering situation.
And then on DOT property now, I understand that they've put out an ordinance that you can't camp on DOT property.
On some of the property, I understand.
Because I saw something there off a market where part of the right-of-way was owned by the Department of Transportation, and no camping was allowed there. On the other side of that sign is where the camping was taking place. So they just moved over to the private side. There's sort of, I guess the state is taking a determination on that?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I guess, what transpired over and moved her off the K Park level that was a big encampment there. And DOT asked us to move this.
If you remember, the overpass on Market Street at College was a huge encampment there a few years ago. We finally got DOT to agree to trespass them, and we had to clean that out. It was huge. It was a pretty nice off the community, which without Market Street, and you saw dozens of people showing camps.
Then the one off of Hurst, Officer Phillips here, that was the one. Off of Hurst Drive, that part of that property was owned by the city. I think there was a pretty significant encampment there. It was a neighbor's, asked us to do something about that. I guess it kind of migrated from north, from M. L. K. over, it seems, to that particular site.
Yes, wherever there's any woodland left in the community, and there's not a lot. I mean, it's thinning out pretty dramatically. It's kind of where a lot of these folks end up migrating towards.
And you're saying, Mary, the difference between the ordinances that we currently have and the ordinances that are proposed is about five or six. Things that are different.
Yes, sir.
And I guess you've identified the previous page one.
Yes, sir, and there are similarly some things that are covered in our ordinance that, in our ordinances now, that aren't covered in the other ordinance. So there's also five or six the other way.
Then I had a call, I've had several emails about this, about the criminalization of this and, I guess, concerns about abuse of law enforcement. And I'm going to ask a question. I remember this been years ago. Were you inserted cameras in the cars? There was a lot of people who talked to us about being stopped for no reason at all. And it seemed that once the cameras went in the cars, there are very little of that because it's on camera now. The cameras are still in the cars.
Yes.
And police officers are wearing audio and visual on them. So when they interact with an individual, it automatically triggers it. So we have a recording of what's happening for those that have a concern about some criminalization taking place if our officers are abusing someone.
Yes, and we actually have capacity, some capacity to remotely look at cameras.
Okay.
Not just later, but we can see it actually in real time.
And there's also audios in the car too. So there's a total transparency within that process.
There is, and there are. You know, we talked about the enforcement piece of this, you know, versus services. I strongly recommend you read the Wall Street Journal article yesterday on San Francisco, one of the most liberal cities in the country, effort to decrease homeless encampments throughout the city. And they're one of the few success stories in this country right now that are actually having positive impact in their point of time numbers have decreased. And it's a combination of pretty aggressive social service interaction immediately upfront with a combination of enforcement. And if you have an opportunity to read that article, I think you'll see that there is a potential to have some impact on this stuff. And I think San Francisco, being as, you know, left coast as you can get, including the workout out in that area, the fact that they have taken a little different tact, I think there's a possibility to have some real positive impact.
I can think of that. But I was going to read a tweet from the mayor of San Francisco that was put out yesterday, send it to a few of you. Mayor of San Francisco, Daniel Murray. San Francisco always needs the services, but we're going to be there a little longer. An option, basically, to use drugs on our streets. So I think to Chief's point, we're seeing, while presentation is self-aware, you know, a holistic approach also includes clear boundaries and enforcement. That's what I believe is just what it does. It's not a silver bullet to the issue. So also not criminalizing homeless, because of what it is, given folks are out there dealing with it every day, an additional enforcement mechanism while we continue work with the service projects that we have and as city leaders on other solutions.
So when you approach a gap, sleeping on the street, what would we be processing? Where would we say, how would we say to officers, do they stay with them? Tell them what the process was there?
Well, every situation is different. There's no one process we use generally. If someone called a complaint or it's obviously conspicuous, like it's, you know, in the middle of a sidewalk downtown, we're going to say, hey, you're going to have to get up and move, okay? And we'll probably walk away, you know? And we'll come back a little bit later, and if it's still there, hey, you got to move. You know, at some point, you know, most of the time, they're going to. Most of these folks are not confrontational unless they're having an episode, okay? Absent of that, most of these folks are going to just, you know, move and do something else. Late at night, there's not much available for folks. You know, I mean, most of the beds are taken out of it. You know, there's, and the guys on the street know much better than I what, who they can reach out to in a crisis situation. You know, but normally, we're not going to be aggressive with them. And we're not aggressive with them. But there's also, you know, and I've said this before, a lot of people don't like to be saying this, but nobody has a right to take anyone else's property over. You just don't. And so, you know, we're kind of caught in the middle to try to be the referee in how we take care of this stuff. You know, it's a national problem that we're all dealing with. You know, it's just not unique to homeless.
Sure.
Are you seeing habitual offenders? We talk about the unhoused or like middle of the deal and I can't feel any issues. Are there like a number of people that you guys have come in contact with? That are fit in the category and Rafferty, what service have they provided?
So I think one of our lieutenant down there said, I think it was about a dozen. You know, frequent flyers who've been there for several years. You know, and they're, you know, they're, you know, they're six souls, you know? And unfortunately, the lack of secure treatment facilities, absent of that, you know, they're out there in the street, you know? Occasionally, we bring them to hospital, and occasionally, they'll get help for a little while and be let back out with medication. But we literally don't take their medication. And when they don't take their medication, they revert back to crisis mode again. And it's just, it's possible. So about a dozen of them is what they're saying. You know, rest folks, you know, they're, you know, most homeless people are criminals. They just are, you know? And, you know, we, we, we should be categorized as that, okay? Because if they're not, we do have some violent crimes. Some homeless folks down off Market Street. We had, personally, I know of three murders we had in encampments outside of the facility down there. But generally speaking, they're not criminals. So we should really be treated as criminals. But then I get that. But we also have to balance that with the rights of property owners, okay? There has to be a balance there. And so that's what we're trying to do. And we can't win. Either way, we don't win, you know, because everyone, someone's mad at us. So we're trying to do the best we can to balance that ball. So, we're trying to do the best we can to balance that, that whole.
Wait a second, Mr. Matt, I got a little something. So, so from what I hear, based on what Meredith said and what Chief Vangel said, the mechanisms that we need are already placed, it's just an enforcement issue. So, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we don't need to put people in bad situations based on how it looks or how it's perceived. Again, I said that earlier. Uh, we just need the help. So, Meredith's proposal of training law enforcement about the new potential ordinance, why not just put the ordinances that we have in place together and then inform law enforcement about what needs to be done or what can be done and go forward? I, I think it's pretty simple, that everything's in place. Won't need to reinvent the wheel, trying to just lock people up, that's, or, or, you know, get them off the street. Because what we're, we're not addressing is, there was a push from the river wall years ago to, to get them off the river wall. And they went to the library, and then from the library, they went to M L K and Kerr. And from M L K and Kerr, they just go into every instance of the community. And you don't have a lot of pushback, you don't have a lot of outcry about those folks being in that segment of this community, but they're there. You can't ride down Princess Place Drive, Market Street. I mean, I was at the light at Market and Center Drive, and I saw the guy come around the building. He came from the side of the building to the Market Street side of the building and, and relieved himself on Market Street. That's not something that we hear a lot about, but it's true, I saw it my own way. So, there's an enforcement mechanism and education piece that needs to be put together, but this new ordinance is, is unnecessary.
Do you want to disagree with you?
Didn't ask you that, sir.
Yeah, I know you asked, I had to tell you.
You didn't ask me, you just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I'm chief, chief, you may change that, and you have him, I think he says something like you work with social workers or?
We don't have, we don't have a lot of like police and social workers, like walking in beat together. Or do we? No. They, um, they, they will, if we need them or we want them, they'll, they'll, they'll be there, they'll come with us. I mean, they've never said no, okay, so, yeah, but, you know, they, they, they've got their, their deal they're doing, and, you know, and, but we, we will work together closely. Uh, if, you know, we have a situation that requires some, you know, some intervention, then they'll be there. They'll come with us if we're gonna walk or camp. If we're gonna look at an encampment that we want to work, they'll, they'll come out there with us. But to say they're walking a beat with us, no, no, they're, they're not.
Is that, that happened, to your knowledge, anywhere in the country?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, I have a lot of agencies that employ social workers, actually ride with the officers and go out and, you know, make, you know, make contact. Yeah, that, that, that's not unusual. But usually it's a budget issue. Right, sir. Thank you.
I'd be curious to know what that could look like for us. I mean, I know that we've got a couple of different street outreach teams that already work in the region, but I, because I don't, does, well, at least, at least, do I have any social workers?
Yes, we had one that's about juvenile outreach.
Juvenile outreach?
Yeah, social worker, yes. And we had, maybe you weren't here, but the mayor was, you know, we, you know, we had a program to reduce incarceration and recidivism. Uh, that was really successful. Uh, we reached out to inmates and the system. Because, you know, back when I first got here, we weren't doing anything. When prisoners were coming out of prison, they were just putting them back into, into our, into our city, right? And then they would have a high recidivism rate. So, we put together counselors and social workers, and we reached out to these folks in prison as they get ready to get out, and voluntarily, they wanted to work with us. We helped find them a place to live, we found jobs for them. I mean, and we had a great success rate. Our recidivism, you know, went from about, I think it was seventy-five percent, now maybe to twenty-five percent or something. It was a pretty successful program, but like anything else, it just kind of fell, fell apart. We had some staffing issues and, and it kind of went away, but unfortunately.
That's a pretty great interest to me, and probably get the conversation that we have before the break about, you can provide social workers, you can provide outreach, but they've got to have somewhere to refer people to.
Sir.
Well, we, I, so we partnered with business community. We found business community that were willing to hire these guys. Okay? And that's how, that, that was the hook. I mean, you don't have, you don't have a job, and it doesn't matter what you're gonna do, it's not gonna, probably not gonna work real well. So, we got commitments from the business community, and we got these guys hooked up for a job, and, you know, some of them were real successful.
I, I guess I'm gonna ask the audience the same question I asked earlier, and then, what are we missing? And what is it that, like, beating you on your chest, that you want to say, that when you leave here, you're gonna go, gosh, I always could've asked that question? Anybody got it?
Yes, sir. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I have to, I'm sorry, okay? Alan, do I gotta step up? I don't want to occupy too much of your time, guys. Alan, sir, they could take their council buildings. Where could a homeless person who's living on the streets legally occupy if there's no shelter built? And how could they not be in violation of the city code? And whether under the current mixture of ordinances, or some consolidated version of the current ordinances, or the slightly modified, improved, or, you know, version that's being proposed? Not on private property, presumably, not in the DOT right-of-way, most of it. Like, I mean, I think that ultimately, it comes back to the question of the musical chairs. And somebody is violating city code because there's not a chair, you know? Uh, city attorney at the last meetings talked a lot about what the definition of occupy is. People take space. Where legally can somebody be if not on city property or on public property? This is a very difficult question to answer, and I think, you know, in, in Houston, where they had success with an ordinance very similar to this, they first offered shelter, and if you did not accept the offer of shelter, then there were criminal misdemeanor, what have you, for refusing shelter. But if there is no legal place to go, what do we expect these people to do? I, I think ultimately, that's, you know.
Pushed.
That, and, and so, you know, whether the current ordinances or the proposed ordinances, you know, how's the chief supposed to enforce even the current ordinances? If all he's really doing is making someone go to a different public space, violating the same ordinance, just not the same square footage? Are you solving the problem?
But I'm gonna ask you a question, Alan. Where do you want to get the money?
Again, I have no answers, but I.
Wait a minute, I just want to make certain that the community understands this. We get forty percent of the tax revenue, county gets sixty. We get twenty percent of the sales tax revenue, county gets eighty, and I'm not blaming this on the county. But our financial structure, based on what the state allows us under state statute, state law, gives us less money. And yet, we don't have human services nor Department of Health under our jurisdiction.
We're being pushed into it.
But we're being pushed into it. So, I want to be very clear about this, and we are the only entity and the only government that has supported housing with supporting services at Lake Side Reserve and at Sparrow. And I know how much time it took to do that. So, unless you're gonna change the financial model and give cities, and by the way, you could give us more of the sales tax revenue based on what this county is allowed to do, based on either per, on admiring tax or per capita, and you know this, we'd get fifty percent of the sales tax revenue, which if we're willing as a community to spend more money, we would. But you're putting all of it, or all of it, I'm not saying you're putting all of it, because I'm not saying that to you or anybody else, but all of it seems to have now nested in the incorporated city limits, whether we like it or not. And I would challenge anybody to say, to say, we're gonna put a facility in an unincorporated area of the county, and I would love to see what kind of blowback they get from those citizens. It's a very complex situation, and I'm not, everybody's passionate about this. We're trying to find something that works for everybody, and I, I hear what you're saying, but a lot of it comes down to funding. And a lot of people will say, it's not our problem, it's the city's problem, you deal with it. But at some point in time, it will overflow from here, and it's gonna go out into a place where you may be residing, and you may not like it. But it's all residing within the incorporated city limits based on the map that you showed us, Rachel. And it's not, it's overwhelmed our capacity to handle it. And for us to be able to put up any additional money for additional housing or shelter, it does take time. And should all the shelters be in the city? I'm just gonna ask that question point blank to everybody. Is that right? Is it fair? No, and Kevin said it best the last meeting, is parts of our community that are receiving the brunt of it, and is it fair to those parts of the community that are having to receive the brunt of it? Other people said, well, it's not my problem, it's not in my backyard, I don't care, it's their problem.
And the very people that were, well, some of the people that were complaining the loudest, if you had to pick a geographic location in New Hanover County where to put the healing place, it would be in the medical community, and we caught tons of blowback from everybody, and worst thing in the world. That's, I mean, and you have to, that has to be part of the equation too, who we're dealing with. Nobody wants it, everybody wants to solve the problem, it's like everybody wants to go to heaven, nobody wants to die. But.
Oh, my God.
You ain't got to worry about that. Okay. Anybody else?
You're closer than me, sir.
Anybody else? Phil? Yes, Mr. Harris.
Can you come up and speak?
Come on, Mr. Harris. Okay, I gotta stand up. Yeah. Okay, one point Alan made, it's, it's a good point, but the reality is that the camping ordinance will be kind of like a speed limit. It's really not gonna be enforced on everybody. I mean, if W P D were tagging people going over thirty-five to thirty-five zone, I mean, the cars would be lined up, stopped. It's, it's really a tool for W P D to use when there is a serious problem that needs to be addressed. So, I, I mean, the, the thing about envisioning that they're gonna run off every single person who's, who's sleeping unhoused on public property, it, they don't have the manpower to do it, but are there some people that do need to be relocated? Absolutely.
I just got one, one part of it, a lot of some of the commentary that we heard. Fact of the matter is that June of twenty twenty-four, the Supreme Court of the United States ruled that municipalities can enforce public camping ordinances regardless of how much shelter space is, is in place. And since that time, hundreds of cities, including some of the ones that we, we talked about today, have rushed to do just that. So, this is not, again, yeah, some things I've said, this is some, some new idea, or another tool in the, in the toolbox that I think will be effective as we work towards a broader solution.
What do you?
We have no additional staff.
We what?
We have no additional staff.
Okay. In fact, we're standing down.